Mike, it's five after.
My apologies. They did that DNA test and they said it was ninety percent. So, I call the meeting to order for the Pacifica City Council for October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. First thing is the closed session report.
No reportable action.
Okay, next is call to order, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Voderlas?
Here.
Councilmember DeGree?
President.
Mayor Protam Keener?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
And next item on the agenda is salute to the flag led by me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next is a special presentation, and it is the sixtieth anniversary of Pacifica. So, Mike, did you want to give a quick synopsis of what we're doing?
Do you want to read the proclamation first, and we've got a few things we want to announce after that, if that's okay?
Okay, sure. So, in recognition of the sixtieth anniversary of the city of Pacifica, whereas in November twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, the city of Pacifica will celebrate its sixtieth anniversary of incorporation; and whereas in seventeen sixty-nine, a group of explorers led by Don Gaspar de Portola sighted San Francisco Bay from a point now known as Sweeney Ridge, which is within the eastern boundary of Pacifica and part of the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. Eighteen acres at the Portola Discovery Site were purchased after incorporation have been designated as a national landmark. And whereas, starting in seventeen eighty-five, crops were planted in San Pedro Valley at an outpost of Mission Dolores, in eighteen thirty-nine, Don Francisco Sanchez was given a Mexican land grant with boundaries similar to the present city boundary lines. In eighteen forty-six, he moved into the Sanchez Adobe, which is currently maintained as a San Mateo County Museum and Park on Lindemar Boulevard. And whereas, Pacifica remained for years primarily as an agricultural area until the nineteen oh-six San Francisco earthquake, land speculators stimulated by the construction of the Ocean Shore Railroad subdivided and developed a series of small coastside communities. And whereas, the Little Brown Church, Anderson Store, and San Pedro School, which later became City Hall, date from this period. In nineteen oh-eight, Henry Harrison McCloskey, an attorney for Ocean Shore Railroad, built a castle-like home which still dominates the hill above Sharp Park. And whereas, Mrs. Honora Sharp donated four hundred and ten acres to the Siding County of San Francisco to develop a recreation area which became the Sharp Park Golf Course and the Rifle and Archery Range. And whereas, subdivisions created to meet the needs of young families of returning World War II veterans gave rise to a sudden spurt of community growth. And whereas, the area was incorporated as a general law city on November twenty-second, nineteen fifty-seven, and took the name of Pacifica. Ten communities including Edgemore, Pacific Manor, Manor Village, Westview, Sharp Park, Fairway Park, Valamar, Rockaway Beach, Lindemar, and Pedro Point all became one city. And whereas, the city was given two of the working models of sculptor Ralph Stockpole's Giant Statue of Pacifica, which was created for the Golden Gate International Exposition on Treasure Island in nineteen thirty-nine and forty. The statue for the exhibit stood eighty feet high and was said to be a composite of all the peoples of the Pacific Ocean. The working models of the statue can be seen at City Hall and the council chambers. And whereas, the green and white became the city colors and the fuchsia was designated as the city flower. Wisdom in Progress became the city slogan, although Scenic Pacifica, later suggested by Carl McCarthy, has been used in recent years. In nineteen seventy, Balagar, Spain, the birthplace of Portola, became the sister city of Pacifica. And whereas, in recent years, the city has completed a number of notable projects, such as the Espinod Utility Undergrounding, two thousand eight, the Memorial Bench Program, two thousand twelve, Sanchez Dog Park, two thousand twelve, Senior Services Bocce Ball Court, two thousand thirteen, School Crosswalk Warning Lights, two thousand thirteen, the Pacifica State Beach Parking Program, two thousand thirteen, Community Center Senior Center Improvements, two thousand sixteen, California Coastal Trail Right-of-Way Acquisition, two thousand sixteen, the Snowy Plover Protections Fencing, two thousand seventeen, the San Pedro Creek Bridge, two thousand seventeen, breaking ground on the EQ Basin Project, two thousand seventeen, and breaking ground on the Palmetto Streetscape, two thousand seventeen. And whereas, here in the city of Pacifica, it is evident that we are a city built on community involvement, hard work, and pride of its citizenry. Pacifica is a beautiful, desirable, and safe community in which to live, work, play, and conduct business. Happy sixtieth anniversary, Pacifica, done this twenty-third day of October, two thousand seventeen.
All right, yeah. Thank you very much. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Michael Perez, and I'm the director of the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department, and the chair of the Sixtieth Anniversary Committee. And I want to take a moment to recognize committee members. Some are here, some are not. But we have Shirley Gibbs from the Pacific Historical Society and the Alliance Club, longtime recreation sports advocate, as well as from the Pacifica Tribune, Horace Hinshaw; Victor Spano from our Pacifica Chamber of Commerce. We also have city staff members that have been involved in this process, Kathy O'Connell, Jessica Dominguez, Michael Moran, and Christina Gendreau. November twenty-second, two thousand seventeen will mark the sixtieth anniversary of incorporation of the city of Pacifica, and there are several events planned to commemorate and celebrate this milestone the weekend of November eighteenth and nineteenth. On Saturday, the eighteenth, from eleven to three, at Pacifica Community Center, there is going to be a city open house. There will be Pacifica nonprofits, local organizations, as well as city departments will be there, participating by hosting tables, information, goodies. Their organizations will be there, engaging folks in activities and to hand out some items. There will be activities for kids, fun, food, drink. And right now, as of now, we have over thirty groups that are participating in that. And I'd like to introduce Kathleen Manning from the Historical Society, and she's going to bring you up on some of their happenings as well.
The sixtieth anniversary of Pacifica's incorporation will be celebrated with a dinner at Nick's Restaurant on November eighteenth, co-sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, the Pacifica Historical Society, and the city of Pacifica. A social hour with a cur between five and six P.M. program at six to seven P.M., followed by dinner. Costs of the tickets are sixty dollars. In past years, at anniversary celebrations, the dinners have sold out. Anticipating the same this year, as Nick's only seats a hundred and twenty, we are having a repeat performance at a luncheon the next day, November nineteenth, beginning at eleven A.M. We invite your participation in this anniversary event, and we have tickets with us this evening if you wish to make a purchase. Thank you. And next will be Shirley Gibbs.
Have you ever been lost, only to discover something unexpected? Well, in seventeen sixty-nine, Gaspar de Portola did that, and he will be at the anniversary dinner to tell you what he found. Did you know that prior to the golf course, the area was a barren deserted stretch of sand dunes surrounding a lake named Laguna Salada, which was a brackish lagoon in an area known as Salt Valley? Honora Sharp, who donated the land, will be present to tell you the facts. Also, Dolly Fine, San Francisco's profit-sharing madam, owned a home right here in Salada Beach, and she will share her memories. We are pleased to tell you that we have a minister at the Little Brown Church in the early forties, and he's present here this evening, Reverend Harkins.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Harkins, who spent almost forty years at the Little Brown Church after I was interviewed by three aldermen who really wanted me, but there was a problem. I was a minister of the Methodist faith, and this congregation was Presbyterian. But overnight, I became a Presbyterian. Tell you more about it at the dinner.
Thank you, Marvin. We have ten impersonators of historic events. They will tell you their stories in first person, and we will also debate the incorporation. Our string of communities really resisted the incorporation. Two attempts to incorporate failed prior to our success in nineteen fifty-seven. We invite you to attend our history dinner and learn more about the beginnings of our city. Thank you.
And one more thing I'd like to say is that we do have a sixtieth anniversary webpage set up on the city's website. You can access this from our homepage, or part of the main information, sort of scrolling around, the highlight events there. You'll see it if you wait probably five seconds, it'll come by. Otherwise, you can get it to the About section in the drop-down menu, and there's information on the page about how to purchase tickets, what time the events are, and all that stuff. And of course, if you have any questions, you can also call the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. That it? All right. Did you guys want to picture with the proclamation, or? Yeah. Yeah? They do? Okay. Okay. Next is the consent calendar. Okay, Sue?
Federal. I had a request from the, some members of the public to move item nine. It won't move very far, but move from nine to eight, just switch those two.
Is there any comments about that?
Mine with me.
It's okay with me.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to move item nine to item eight, and item eight to item nine.
Second.
Can you vote? Okay, the motion to move item nine to item eight has passed, five-zero, so the agenda's been amended. Is there any council members that wish to pull something off the consent, make a comment?
Yeah, item number five.
Okay. Is that to pull, or just ask a question?
Couple of questions.
Okay, I do have two items that people wished, from the audience, wished to pull, and that's two and six. So, I guess, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item two, five, and six? Need a motion?
Motion to approve consent, less items two, five, and six.
I'll second.
Okay, please vote. And the motion passes five-zero, okay. So, I guess Tiger is item number two on the consent.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jostrols, Big Stick of Pacifica. As I was reviewing the agenda packet this week, Kathy, timer. Thank you. And I was glancing at my comments. I noticed one very, very, very minor discrepancy and something else that, to my mind, was kind of left out toward the bottom. So, the second sentence from last, I'm on packet page fifty-five, in the middle of the sentence where it's, where I'm quoted as saying, "If sincere in the wish to do more than mollify and assuage growing fear in our community, it was an opportunity to educate about what the protections mean." I noticed that where I use the word assuage, as wage, which admittedly is not an easy word to pronounce. Instead, the word usage is there, which totally changes the meaning. So, if that could just be edited, A.S.S.U.A.G.E. And then, the other thing I noticed, and I went back to look at the video to make sure I wasn't mistaken, the last sentences, he suggested that they may have informational flyers distributed to libraries, schools, etc., on what a sanctuary city means. And there's, I listed a bunch of things, there's no need for that. But, and I made sure that before the timer went off, there were a few other suggestions, not just the flyers, but also I suggested an educational ad campaign involving the Tribune, Pacific Coast Television, QFM, and that a city services educational program with fire, Public Works, police, and a component of which was teaching students what it means that their state and that their city is a sanctuary city might be wise to consider in terms of educating. Education being what, in my view, is absolutely the best thing that can come out of us having a city ordinance, whereas otherwise, we'd have to wait for the state presumably before beginning such an ad campaign, educational ad campaign. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have item number six on the consent calendar, Bridget Duffy. I saw her address.
Hi, I'm very distracted. It's not easy to take notes and be Bridget Duffy at the same time. Anyway, this is about the library, correct?
Yes.
So, my question is, I was reading the thing down there. This library, conception of the library, nineteen ninety, that's almost thirty years ago. A great deal has happened in the last thirty years. You know, one of them, the advent of a computer in everybody's hands. Libraries just aren't as popular as they used to be. The city of Pacifica, the people, anyway, have rejected this idea not once, not twice, but technically three times because they tried to gather enough signatures to get it on the ballot, but couldn't. People wouldn't sign it. People don't really want another library. I mean, really, that's the majority viewpoint. I was talking to people at the Fog Fest. I was like, hey, there's already a library there. Is this a real draw to this community? And the people in business said, no. The library is not a draw to this neighborhood. I said, what do you think would happen if we had Pacifica's Oceanic Discovery Center in this spot? They were like, that would draw some people. Yeah. People come from over the hill by the hundreds of thousands to go to the ocean, not to the library. They go over the hill to go to the library. The people over the hill come here to see our ocean and to learn more about it. This is... Why is the city of Pacifica still spending time and money on a project that has been rejected by the people? It's like beating somebody up until they stop complaining. Right? Until they stop complaining, then you'll, you know, this is, you're forcing this down the throats of the people of Pacifica. We want, we don't want a library. We like our two libraries. We like the pieces of property that our two libraries are sitting on. Unfortunately, the real estate development industry also likes those pieces of property, which is why they're trying to force us to close the two lovely libraries that are on those properties because legally, they cannot sell those lovely pieces of land to the real estate development industry as long as there's a library sitting on it. So, I mean, I figured this out a long time ago. I don't know why everybody else hasn't. So, anyway, I'm not against libraries, by the way. I use the library all the time. I think our libraries are fantastic. There's some of the, there's, anyway.
Item, Dan Steggeek, for number six on the consent calendar.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Dan Steggeek. I just wanted to draw attention to a mistake in the staff report on packet page one eighty-four. It said, "The pre-election polling showed majority support in the community for a new library facility." The actual question that was asked wasn't whether we wanted a new library. There were two related. Number one was, "The Pacifica library is old, outdated, and in need of repair." And the second one was, "Pacifica residents need and deserve a modern library." And there's some confusion, obviously, you know, if a library is a place that has books, there was, you know, a modern library was AD-135. But if your definition of a modern library is a library that has 3D printers, then we've got them now at Sharp Park and at the Sanchez Library. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other speakers? I have no other yellow cards. Okay, so I closed the cards for the consent calendar. John, you had questions, five?
Yeah, on item number five, so Van? Yeah. No. I've got my close-up glasses on.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Marquez, Associate Civil Engineer with Public Works.
Yes, you are. My first question is, the staff report states that, that the home at five thirty-two Espinod, I should start by saying that this item is a resolution to basically pay for the purchase and demolition of five twenty-eight and five thirty-two Espinod. And it says that at five thirty-two Espinod, it fit all the necessary criteria to be eligible for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funds. And I just wondered, what are those criteria?
So, there was a few criteria, mainly being that it needed to be yellow-tagged within a certain time period, and it needed to have a willing seller.
Okay. Were any of the other criteria, what the property ends up being, like, you know, designated open space, and that, is that included in this hazard mitigation program also?
Yes, that is correct. There is some, there's a deed restriction to limit as open space.
Right, and the other thing I wondered about is the contingency of fourteen percent. So, first of all, the, the total project is nine hundred and ninety-three... So first of all, the, the total project is nine hundred ninety-three thousand, and it's totally funded by the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The contingency is fourteen percent. What happens if this isn't used? Do we just give the money back, or what?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments from council? I just wanted to make a comment regarding item number six. It was misstated that the people do not want a new library when it went to an election. It did not receive enough to pass a bond, which is sixty-six point six, but it did receive a majority of the votes cast, fifty-four percent plus something. So I just wanted to correct some misstatements that were made at the podium. Okay? So I need a, this?
One more thing on item five.
Okay.
Not involving you.
Oh.
The, at several points during, in the documents, we need to update those to reflect the current city manager. It still has Lori Tinfo. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion to, oh, sorry, sorry, so you didn't have the light on. Okay.
Did you finish your comment?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Regarding the library, too, this is just accepting our report this evening, and that council will be having a more in-depth discussion about the library, and I would say that, at least from my point of view, we definitely are going to be very much engaged in the library discussions. Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve two, five, and six. John Keener?
I make a motion to approve consent items two, five, and six.
Both Sues seconded. Yeah. Vote, please. And that motion passes unanimously, five zero. Next item is oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifico Municipal Code Title II, Chapter One, Section Two dash one point one one eight. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may at the direction of the presiding officer be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. I would also ask that everybody respect everybody's opinion and right to state what they want to say at the podium regarding any issue. So we have quite a few cards, so I was going to limit speeches to, speaking to two minutes? Kathy? So I have Tree Steyer, David Alquist, Kimberly Clausen.
Good evening. First of all, I want to compliment certain people on the city council. For one thing, I picked up the two thousand seventeen City Council Liaison and Committee Assignments, and Mr. O'Neill is on eleven, and he's an alternative on one. Keener is on five, and he's alternative on seven. Sue Degree is on seven, and alternative on four. Martin is five, and two alternatives. Sue is three, and six alternatives. And we have nobody on the Transportation Authority and nobody on the domestic violence, which I think are two important issues, because if we're diverting our funds from the highway funds, somebody ought to represent us on the Transportation Authority. Now Barbara Arietta is on the advisory board, but she's been out for a while because she's been ill, okay? That's one thing. Then the other thing is, none of you people attend the county supervisors' meetings, but I do, and you get a lot of information there. So under public records, I requested the full investigation by Sue Wagstaff on Sue Degree. They refused to give it to me, but they gave me two supplements where they told me she was still being investigated by the FPPC. Now, this was not in the jurisdiction of the DA in the first place. It was in the jurisdiction of the county supervisors, because they implemented ordinance oh four four three oh, which you can get a copy from them, stating they have jurisdiction over city, or county and city officials. The other thing I want to talk about is the letter I received from you, Mike, regarding how much in debt we are, eight hundred thousand dollars per year starting next year, and a deficit of three point two, three million after that. And I don't know whether to believe your letter or Heinz, but somebody needs to be fired, because it shows that, the first budget showed a deficit of one million dollars, and we got a balanced budget. And the other thing is, you and Sue being on Realtors should have rescued yourself along with Sue Degree, and our city attorney was not on the ball, and she needs to be fired, because we can, the county has twenty-five lawyers that we have access to. You just need to show up.
David Alquist, Kimberly Clausen, Amy Kaplan.
Good evening, council members. I'm here this evening on Measure C. There's some things I need clarification on. I have tried to get some answers from the people I would feel and know, and I'm getting at times, I'm not sure. A while back, I had a conversation with a council member about fees versus taxes, and he felt that the tax, that the fees were not taxes, but I have here, right in front of me, my property tax bill. And down here, we have, let's see, Pacifica stormwater fee, Jefferson maintenance fee, FedCal storm fee, mosquito abatement assessment, and I definitely do remember voting on that, and also the Jefferson maintenance fee, and the big one, the Pacifica sewer fees. And somehow, this is on my tax bill. So my biggest question is, what's the difference between taxes and fees? And this comes into play, because I also understand that in this measure, I am not a landlord, I want to make that clear, just a homesteader, bought a house here and finally had to pay it off. That's why I consider myself a homesteader and not a property owner. Property owner kind of designates wealth, and it takes twenty-five years to pay off a mortgage. But on this fee issue, it is not clear, and that, okay, I was back, back to the landlord. The landlord is responsible for the fees of nineteen dollars, six dollars in the beginning, which I believe is twenty-five dollars for the first year, and I also understand that that landlord has to pay this upfront in the first year to fund this commission. I almost feel that this is a tax, not a fee, and also it can be adjusted by the council, which brings up my second point that I wanted to find out, and no one can answer this either. If this measure is passed, can the council change it? I get answers of yes, maybe no. The reason why I bring it up this way is because it was put on the ballot by the council, so if passed by the voters, they have now the right to make adjustments. And I would sure like an answer on that, because that could be, especially right now with the sitting, sitting existing council, I am concerned that if they can, they can even change this measure even more if they had the chance. Thank you.
Kimberly Clausen, Amy Kaplan, Kathy Mareso.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Kimberly Clausen. I oppose Measure C, because I don't think it will help struggling renters with an annual increase of two to five percent stated in Section nine dash nine point one oh seven point A, point number two. Then in Section nine dash nine point five oh five, number F, a landlord may not evict a tenant under this provision if the tenant, number one, has resided in the rental unit for at least five years. This would be considered an unfair cause. To me, how so? The renter is the owner, and the renter is a temporary. Unfortunately, people making rentals permanent property, because of Section nine dash nine point one zero five, number F, number one and three, if the tenant goes to the commission and the commission deems it unfair, then the choice goes to the renter and not the owner. Then, if the renter stays, if the renter chooses to stay, they get to stay on, in that property that they don't own. To me, unfair to the owner. If the renter decides to move, then the renter will get three months of fair market rate price plus moving expenses, to me, also not fair, and makes the renters look a little greedy. It also does not add any rental rentals to Pacifica, which is a temporary place to stay. And if needed, if someone's house, like unfortunately, all the fires in the north, if some, something happened like that in our community, then guess what? I won't have a place to rent out while my house is getting built, because someone is renting it permanently in Pacifica because of Measure C. It also doesn't add any rent, like, and then it makes rentals permanent housing without paying any property taxes, which go to our city services. Renters might argue that the rent goes to property taxes, not necessarily, and you shouldn't assume. The only thing that will help our city is to build more. Thank you for listening.
Amy Kaplan, Kathy Mareso, Delia McGrath.
Hi. I just came back from Santa Rosa doing a bunch of volunteer work up there, and I live at the top of Manor. There's a lot of speculation, it's not confirmed, that it's possible that electrical wires caused some of those fires. And if you're up at the top of Manor and you drive down, you'll see that that entire neighborhood is infested with electrical wires, and with Malaga Ridge and everything being so close, it seems to me that it's a risk that should be considered when you're talking about climate change. Aside from sea level rise, you know, the storms are going to get more intense, the winds will be more strong, the winds will be much more strong, and there's a potential for those power lines going down and starting fires here in Pacifica. So aside from just like bringing awareness to that, like, please be mindful that sea level rise isn't the only issue, and fire due to wind and electrical might be, I also would like to ask the council to just, when there's time and space, to maybe explore alternate sources of funding for undergrounding wires, because right now, my understanding is, it's the homeowner's responsibility, you know, which means I'd have to get everybody on Manor Drive or on my block or whatever to agree, but I think that, you know, maybe somehow, we could look at high-risk areas for wires in town and just start discussing where can this money come from where the burden isn't placed on the homeowners. Thanks.
Kathy Mareso, Delia McGrath, Susan Wallace.
Good afternoon, good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wanted to speak once again to Measure C and the cost of the ordinance. Once again, Measure C will only raise a half a million. We think the cost of the measure will be closer to two million, and the shortfall of one point five million will go to the general fund. I think that's unfair to the people of Pacifica, because that will take away from the public services that are so needed here. The backers of Measure C are working behind the scenes, we know, to include single-family homes, and the city council can change the measure. Virtually every other city with rent control has added, has included, single-family homes for just cause eviction and mandatory relocation. I believe that Pacifica will also. AB fifteen sixty is a bill in the California Legislature that would repeal the Costa Hacans Act, which exempts single-family homes from the rent control portion. Backers of Measure C are working with other groups who have endorsed Measure C to get fifteen sixty passed in the legislature, in a legislature, so that rent control can be applied to single-family homes. I believe that Measure C creates a huge new government bureaucracy accountable to no one with direct access to the general fund, which is disclosed in the ordinance, saying that the general fund will advance money to create Measure C. So just once again, I would like you to be cognizant of how much money you're throwing away into an ordinance that will not create housing and does not help poor people. Thank you very much.
Delia McGrath, Susan Wallace, Roy Stott.
Everyone? So tonight, I sing the praises of all those who have led the Yes on Sea campaign, and for those who have put in your volunteer time, one, two, three, maybe a dozen hours and more, how enthusiastic you are to get this done, to pass Measure C with a unified voice of yes. You are the most upbeat and compassionate group of people one might find anywhere. You are the ones who care about all our neighbors, and especially renters who have been displaced from their homes and/or have received monstrous rent increases or have been unjustly evicted. You realize that only the elite class in our society can afford to pay these unjustifiably high rents. And I sing the praises of all the voters who are voting yes on sea. We yes-on-sea voters have not fallen for the abhorrent deceptions that have plagued our beautiful town, the ads, letters, mailers, the ghastly signs displayed. We are not misled. We are the true lovers of our community, the true lovers of integrity and honesty. We are most generous towards our neighbors, having no fear that the financial well-being of our city is going to be ruined by Measure C. We know that the money to pay for implementing this priceless ordinance will come from the renters themselves, who will benefit from its passage. We know that the intention of Measure C is fair and straightforward, whose purpose is to stabilize and preserve our community, giving renters predictability about housing costs. We yes-on-sea voters have seen through the thinly veiled greed of an industry that is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to defeat Measure C, confirming its lack of compassion for those who are suffering. We are the voters who courageously are making the decision to support all the members of our Pacifica community. I encourage all Pacifica voters, vote yes on sea. Thank you.
Susan Wallace, Roy Stott, Evangeline Mesa. Mesa, sorry.
Honorable Mayor O'Neill and council members, my name is Susan Gatchell Wallace. I have been a citizen of this community for sixty-three years, and proud to say that I have been a Realtor for thirty-nine of them. SAMCAR, the California Association of Realtors, and the National Association of Realtors are professional, not-for-profit organizations supported by member dollars. They are unique in that all leadership, from the local to the national level, are volunteers, for over, excuse me, for volunteers. For over a hundred years, Realtors have promoted professionalism, ethics, education, and foremost, defended property rights. Our position is that rent control ordinances are a violation of property rights, especially when they include onerous provisions such as just cause eviction and mandatory relocation payments. Owning residential income property is a business, just like any other business. Government should not be given the power to dictate what is a fair rate of return on any business. The only reason our Realtor members, from the local to the national level, have granted member money to our community is to defend property rights. No member or volunteer working to defeat Measure C is now or will ever financially benefit from defeating this measure. Realtors understand, from professional experience, the negative financial Realtors understand, from professional experience, the negative financial impacts to communities and property owners. Rents are higher in rent-controlled cities like San Francisco. San Francisco County Supervisors have recently established a task force to research the legality of a vacancy tax. They estimate there are currently over 36,000 vacant residential units in San Francisco due to landlords exercising their right to go out of the business. This is the result of decades of government artificially suppressing rents. There was a tipping point where property is worth more vacant than occupied. How disturbing those vacancies could provide housing easily for twice the population of Pacifica. Rent control does not work. It is, it does not direct help and resources to those who need it most. Please vote no on Measure C. Exercise your right to vote. Thank you so much.
Roy Stott, Evangeline Mesa. Please, no clapping for either side for each speaker. And Judy Taylor.
My name is Roy Stott, and I'm in Park Pacifica. Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, I come here with a handful of papers, and these are police reports. And they represent the number of times our property has been vandalized by the proponents of Measure C. And it does not count the dozens and dozens of signs that have been torn out of, from people's front yards, uh, that we had to replace at our own cost. Why is it that in Pacifica, only a small group of people have the right to freedom of speech? Why is it the supporters of Measure C feel they have the right to bully us, to tear down our no-onsea signs repeatedly, and deny, deny us our freedom of speech? Why is it that Measure C supporters feel that it is acceptable to trespass on private property, vandalize, steal our signs, and attempt to silence us? I've lived in Pacifica for 41 years, and I think it's about time we admit that our city is going in the wrong direction. Our city is led by a very small but incredibly vocal and active and pushy group of bullies who do not like to be challenged and who are willing to go to any length to silence the majority, including breaking the law repeatedly. They will intimidate people to get their way, and they will engage in illegal behavior over and over. It is time that those of us who value democracy and value our freedom of speech stand up to these bullies and stop this nonsense. Measure C is a bad law that would cost our city millions, cause our city services to be cut, and result eventually in new taxes. These are inescapable facts. No matter how much supporters of Measure C attempt to silence us, and no matter how much they break the law, we will prevail and we will get our message out. And I would like permission at the end of this to submit this to the city clerk, if I could. Election Day, November 7th, is not the end of this struggle to protect Pacifica. It is actually just the beginning. We need to return sanity to our city's leadership, and we need to protect the future of Pacifica from a small group of bullies who would rather run Pacifica off the cliff and silence us all. Please join me in voting no on Measure C.
Evangeline Mesa, Judy Taylor, Gloria Stofan.
Not least, I came with a limp. And I came, I went to a doctor who said, okay, I have an eye patch, and I will put a patch on your eye. I have a defect on my knee, but he's giving me medicine and cure for, for my eye. That is Measure C. It's creating bureaucracy. It's creating all the expenses, but does not add a single housing. So, consider, you know, uh, a vote no to Measure C. If you want to have, if you want to live in a city as beautiful as Pacifica, there is a cost to that. Pacifica is beautiful because the city council cares for it, the citizens care for it. But if you allow people who can't really contribute to the well-being of Pacifica, then you are creating a ghetto by the, by the ocean. So, you need stabilized rent, I agree, but this is not the way to get to that objective. Build more housing, the way San Mateo did it, is they lessened, or, um, so I would say, loosened up requirements for height density, loosen up permit application for, uh, building new properties. They have, some cities have even considered relaxing conditions for secondary units. That is a positive move towards building, uh, more housing, but not rent control. Thank you.
Judy Taylor, Gloria Stofan, Carolyn Jaramallo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a forty-year, forty-three-year coastie, but, um, kind of a carpetbagger from south of the slide. And I'm here mostly to speak against Measure C, but as a cautionary tale. Um, my community, about 25, 30 years ago, decided that they could just say no to developers. And that worked okay for a while, and then one of the developers decided that that wasn't okay anymore and went to court. And the court said, yes, City of Heffman Bay, you were within your rights to, um, deny this permit, but you will write a check for $36 million, roughly three times our, four times our annual budget, to that developer. And the cost of being right in that situation was very, very painful for my community. For the first, um, the Ritz-Carlton took 18 years to develop, and for the first 15 years that it was there, um, the entire transit occupancy tax, roughly a million dollars a year, went into pay for land use litigation. The reason that this ties to rent control is that things that look good on paper and things that make us feel good, like we're really doing something on the right side, oftentimes, um, have unintended consequences. And you heard from the first speaker tonight that you guys are looking at deficits. Um, the City of Mountain View has already found that their rent control program is costing them way more than they intended. So I would just caution everybody to look before you vote. If rent control is the right answer, which I don't believe that it is, but should it be, the way to deal with it is in council meetings, where you can thrash out all of the unintended consequences, and where you don't have to go back to the voters to change things. Thank you.
Gloria Stofan, Carolyn Jaramallo, and Thursday Roberts.
Good evening, council members. My name's Gloria Stofan, Pacifica resident since 1966 and a homeowner. As a small group of those who have been advocating for affordable housing for many years in Pacifica and do live, we do live in the real world of today. In the last three years in particular, our community has been turned upside down. Our mental class are disabled, our hard-working families, our seniors on fixed incomes, teachers, medical techs, et cetera, are struggling to stay in Pacifica and not be displaced. Where do they go in this tight housing market? They just, some of them just can't just move. This housing crisis is real, in the Bay Area and in particular, our city of Pacifica. This is the real world of our coastal community, and the need to consider that action needs to be taken now by supporting rent stabilization and just cause. Thank you.
Carolyn Jaramallo, Thursday Roberts, Rebecca Villalobos.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Harmio. I'm a homeowner here in Pacifica for the past 30 years. Since many Pacificans have received a letter from the mayor that contradicts the information about Measure C posted on the city website, I feel it's necessary to alert the voters to the fact that this letter is not an official statement from the city council, and that the letter was paid for by the real estate industry. The letter has several contradictions to what's posted on the website. I would like to just address several of, two of them. Uh, the mayor's letter states in bold letters that Measure C is a hidden tax on Pacifica taxpayer. The website clearly states, ask the question, is this a tax? And the website clearly states, no, it is not a tax. Uh, it goes on to clearly explain how the program will be paid for, that the renters, uh, that the fee on apartments will pay for the program, and that that fee can be passed on to the renters. Uh, the letter also says that the, um, commission that will be set up to implement the program is going to create a massive bureaucracy. On the website, it clearly says that the rental commission will be set up by the city council and accountable to the city council. The ordinance states that it will be voluntary, there will be no paid commissioners. One of the speakers earlier tonight wanted to know if the ordinance can be amended by the city council without voter approval. On the website, again, that answer is no, and goes on very clearly to explain that. So I just urge everyone to take a look at what's on the city website, questions and answers. It's very clear, the ordinance itself is very clear. You will be supporting over 5,000 Pacificans if you vote on, yes, on Measure C. Also, take a look at the people that are endorsing Measure C. We can hardly call them bullies. We can hardly say they're in this for some financial gain. Uh, you have the California Nurses Association, uh, Laguna Salada Educational Association, Sabrina Brennan Harbor Commissioner, Tenants Together, Pacifica Peace People, Jerome Foley Priest at St. Peter's Church, Faith in Action, Pacifica Social Justice. So there are many groups on here that will be voting for Measure C, and it is urging, I urge you to join them. Thank you.
Thursday Roberts, Rebecca Villalobos, Ian Butler.
Hi, I thought this two minutes was lasting kind of long. So, I'd like to read a letter from Cynthia Cornell. She says she submitted it to the Tribune, um, and it was suggested that it might be good to read it here. What happens if Measure C loses? Dear editor, I'm one of the residents who ran the Measure R campaign for rent stabilization in Burlingame last year. After being outspent by hundreds of thousands of dollars from outside interests and outright lies told to the public, we lost. I hope it will be useful for voters in Pacifica to know what they may experience if C loses, as we now see happening in Burlingame. Speculation in apartment buildings by out-of-town investors will increase, causing even more evictions. If you have children in school, they may lose even more of their best teachers. You will, you will lose most, if not all, of your seniors who rent apartments. Some of your children's friends will have to move away, your adult children will have to keep living with you or move away, your neighborhoods will become more congested because it will take many more renters in each apartment to pay the rent. Your doctor and dentist may lose their assistants, Safeway will have longer lines because workers can't afford to live near their jobs, your coffee houses and favorite restaurants won't be able to keep workers, many of them will have to close. Your churches will lose parishioners, rents will continue to spiral with no end in sight, more people, including families, will become homeless, and Realtors will not help to build affordable housing. Pacifica has always been a vibrant, unique, and diverse community. It shouldn't be torn apart by profiteers with no interest in its past, present, or future, or the people who make it a worthwhile place to live. I hope voters will follow the money in the campaign and decide how to vote based on the values of fairness and love for one's neighbor. Cynthia Cornell, Housing for All, Burlingame. Um, so, the, the city website has answers to questions that are being brought up tonight. Um, the ordinance, the council cannot change what the ordinance says, okay? Everybody, please, read the information on the website. Uh, it's a fee, and it's a fee on renters only, and the program, um, is for the benefit of renters. It's not a tax on the city in general, or homeowners, or anyone else. Everyone is in favor of affordable housing. We need it, we need it, we need it. Uh, everyone is agreed to that. As far as the signs go, um, I, I wish that the no-onsea campaign would take a look at where their signs are located. They're, they're up, they haven't been taken down, because in many cases, they're improperly placed, and reports to Caltrans and other agencies are going unheeded. Um, so, on, on the issue of signs, we hear there's so many no-onsea signs, and part of the reason is that they're placed where they, where they aren't supposed to be.
Rebecca Villalobos, Ian Butler, Tom Thompson.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Villalobos. I'm a student at Terranova High School. I am San Carlos Apache, and I would like to talk about Indigenous people. I've talked in school board meetings, um, school board meetings about changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, just out of respect. But today, I would like to talk about the Native American recognition of at-the-bay discovery site. In our country, the history and very existence of Native peoples often ignored. Native peoples' presence and knowledge is disrespected when European explorers are credited with the discovery places that Native people knew about or lived in. In 1769, the Portola Expedition with Native American guides saw that San Francisco Bay. Portola is credited with discovering the bay, even though many Aloney people were living around the bay, clearly had discovered it earlier. The monument of Sweeney Ridge Commem-- the discovery of San Francisco Bay reads, "From the ridge, the Portola Expedition discovered San Francisco Bay area, November 4th, 1769." There is no acknowledgement that Native people have been living around the bay for at least 1,000 years. The upcoming 250th year anniversary of Portola's expedition is a good opportunity to rewrite inaccurate and disrespectful, disrespectful discovery story. The GGNA has already erected, um, has erected outstanding signage about local Native American history at nearby Maori Point. Students at Terranova High School call upon the GGNR to put up educational signage at the Sweeney Ridge Discovery Site that talks about the Native people living around the bay at the time, and honestly discusses how the claim of discovery ignores Native knowledge and Native people. We ask that, that the new sign, um, by installed, is installed by the time to be part of the 250th year, 2019. Thank you.
Ian Butler, Tom Thompson, and Ellen Hay.
That's the first I'd heard with this, the girl just mentioning. I think that's a great, great idea. Can I second that? Anyhow, um, I'm, I'm not here to tell anybody how to vote, but I do want to make sure that people, when they vote, that they have the actual facts at their disposal. And there's a lot of misinformation out there, and it's hard to know what's true. But I think we can probably assume that our city attorney, uh, knows what is the legal, what's true about stuff, you know? I think you've done a good job putting the, the ordinance together and, and city staff in general. And, uh, I think that, you know, when people are making comments that are, in, contrary to what is, uh, in the, the ordinance and what our attorney and what our staff has said, I think we're, we're discounting that hard work of the people that, you know, our city staff is not politicians. They're here doing work. They're trying to just come up with the truth. And I think that this, this frequently asked questions thing that's on the website, I don't know if the attorney wrote it or vetted it, but I'm sure it's been vetted. And, uh, I, I just want to like verify a couple of things that are, are from that website. Uh, the first question, we've heard people talking about the single-family homes thing. Oh, it's gonna include the single-family homes someday. I, I hear Sue Vadalas talk about that quite a bit. Um, it says here, no, the rent stabilization ordinance, uh, contained in the ballot measure to be voted for specifically exempts single-family residences. Okay, so what if they take away the Costa Hockens? What happens then? Well, Elections Code 9217 provides, and this is the quote from the Elections Code, "No ordinance that is adopted by the voters may be repealed or amended except by a vote of the people." And as we just mentioned here earlier, uh, our ordinance specifically exempts single-family residences. So for that reason, it's a slam dunk, there is no doubt about it. It cannot be amended to include single-family homes without a second vote of the public. So anybody that tells you otherwise is either ignorant of the facts, or they're intentionally deceiving you. So anytime you hear that, somebody comes up here and says that, show them this, it's not true. Now, the other thing, um, you know, the city staff is the ones that came up with this number of $697,000 to implement for, for the first year, and we're hearing a lot of people saying it's gonna cost $2 million. Now, the person that came up with that $2 million is some libertarian guy in Mountain View who has never seen a, a, a government program that he likes. I looked at his work, and it's not really-- I looked at his work, and it's not really work. It's just he kind of came up with this number. I know that our staff actually worked. That was their job, to come up with an accurate number. Now, they couldn't pad the number, because then it would have been a tax. This has got to be a fee. So it had to estimate exactly how much they expected this was going to cost, and that is the number, $697,000. And there's no reason to think that that number is not correct. Thank you.
Tom Thompson, Ellen Haig, and Frank Vella.
Tonight, I fear retaliation for speaking out against bad public policy, and I'm not alone. In the Chapman University 2017 survey of Americans' fears I just provided for you, America's number-one fear is corrupt government officials. Measure C is the poster child for American distrust of government officials. Measure C is a new half-million-dollar tax on property owners. The three-member city council majority insults us by saying Measure C is not a tax. It's a user fee. Hello. If it requires we give money to government, it's a new tax. Measure C creates a $2 million annual government boondoggle with permanent staffing, payroll, retirement, and payroll taxes, offices, equipment, expensive lawyers, and seven unelected commissioners. Experts in economics and municipal finance verify the $2 million cost. Cautioning, though, the $2 million excludes litigation. Do the math. The $1 million deficit plus a $1.5 million deficit from Measure C, Pacifica will be $2.5 million or more underwater and compound annually. And speaking of underwater, Measure C is just another version of managed retreat. Retreat from honesty, retreat from fiscal responsibility, retreat from common sense. No wonder our biggest fear in America is corrupt government officials. Sue DeGree, Deidra Martin, and John Keener, you surely know Measure C, is a new $2 million-plus annual boondoggle paid for by a half-a-million-dollar new tax. The $1.5 million deficit can only come from the general fund. Hooray, though, for Mayor O'Neill and Councilwoman Vaterlos. Sue and Mike are willing to uncover the Measure C boondoggle and financial disaster. Thank you, Mike and Sue, for being the voice of reason for Pacifica and urging no on Measure C. Thank you.
Ellen Haig, Frank Vella, Sharon Vella.
Ellen Haig, 40-year resident of Pacifica and homeowner. Last may I receive this communication from a gentleman who is a renter. My landlord initially gave me a 60-day verbal notice of 60% rent increase. On Sunday, he instead gave me a written 60-day notice of 40% increase. I understand he wants to recoup some of his capital expenditure, but raising my rent, although it is a $500 increase, would no improvement to my apartment interior. What really concerns me is that he won't give me a lease. He wants me to remain month to month, as noted in my rent increase letter. I suspect after the construction, he will raise my rent another 500 or raise my rent every other month. I've emailed him requesting, begging for a lease, but he hasn't replied. He doesn't live in Pacifica, so I have to wait a while for his response. There are two other apartments in my triplex with their leases expiring in June and August, so I'm sure he'll do the same to them when their leases expire. I lived in my apartment for seven years. I have no problem contributing to the grounds maintenance and purchasing items needed. I've been in Pacifica for almost 20 years, and I fear the recent real estate bubble may price me out of a town, where I do volunteer, work, have friends, and family. Please give strong consideration of who would be best served in rent stabilization. I'm not against paying rent increases. However, I'll be lucky if I get a 3.4% COLA this year. So fast forward, this gentleman was no longer able to afford his apartment, and he was forced to move. He found another apartment in Pacifica that he could manage to afford. So yesterday, I received an update. It's been an emotional roller coaster so far. I am now of a mature age and 20-year resident of Pacifica. So this will be a huge adjustment, as I not only leave our town, but my first time leaving the beach. I've grown up with ocean sports, sand in my sheets, and a coastal mindset. I'm optimistic I will find a place, but it is also possible I may leave the state in search of the lifestyle which I'm accustomed. The discussions around Measure C has been enlightening, how people think affordable housing, rent stabilization, are linked to low-income needs. It's ironic, really. My job is a good one at Stanford, and yet here I am. Please think of Tony and all renters in our community and vote yes on Measure C. Thank you.
Frank Vella, Sharon Vella, Celeste Langell, and Celeste is the last card I have for oral communications. Okay, one more.
I'd like to present this to everyone watching tonight, that you may not like that our City Council sent back over $6 million that was to be used to improve our highway. You may not like that the City Council approved a grant of nearly $200,000 to fund a group who already supports letting our homes and businesses be absorbed by sea level rising. You may not like that our City Council has pushed through a rent control measure. Fortunately, due to our two City Council members, Mike O'Neill, Sue Vaterlos, this measure is to be on the ballot this November. You may not like that we have spent time and money to name Pacifica the sanctuary city. You may not like that our city is spending money, resources, and time to make political statements on national matters. Please vote on November 7 and express what you want for Pacifica. I am certain that we all want a council that works and cares about the entire city and what is right, like Mike O'Neill and Sue Vaterlos have shown. Come on out to a City Council meeting, express your views. Write to the Tribune. Go on next door neighborhood and speak out. Three of our council members count on you not to speak out. Please vote by November 7. No on Measure C. I love the argument about a fee or a tax, doesn't matter. We will all be writing a check out of our accounts. Call it what you wish. Thank you.
Sharon Vella, Celeste Langell, Michelle MacIntyre, and I guess there's another card.
Good evening. I forgot my glasses, so I'm going to struggle a bit here. I wish that I was here under better circumstances, because I'm extremely concerned that the three-member majority on our city council are making poor decisions to the detriment of our city. Let me explain my concerns. In just the past year, this three-member majority on our city council has made several decisions to harm Pacifica, some creating permanent damage to our city. The first and most astonishing was our council's absolute refusal to fix Highway 1 and give the money back. The second is our three-member council's pursuit of managed retreat, a policy that, should they get their way, we will lose most of Pacifica to the west of Highway 1, which includes, by the way, 70% of Pacifica businesses. The third is their decision to spend precious time and resources to make our city a sanctuary city, regardless of the fact that it could take money away from our city, that it was totally unnecessary, because our state is now a sanctuary state. And finally, I know that's funny, and finally, one that we are all hearing about now, the three-member majority on our council, who have again spent time and money to cram through a rent control ordinance that thankfully was overturned, but is now on the November ballot. Measure C is a rent control ordinance that will create a massive new department that, in all likelihood, will cost Pacifica $2 million. Just getting it on the ballot has taken precious resources from our streets, our police, and our fire department, and it will continue to take money that we don't have. We have just learned that Pacifica will be about $1 million in debt next year. In four years, our city will be between $3 million and $5 million in debt, and this is all before passing Measure C. These are all decisions that have harmed our city, some causing irreparable harm. I want to personally thank Sue Vaterlos and Mike O'Neill for their level-headed and responsible approach to managing our beautiful city. Please vote no on Measure C.
Celeste Langell, Michelle MacIntyre, and Cynthia Kaufman.
After a lot of misinformation, I thought I'd come up and share my point of view. Susan Getchel-Wallace, a longtime Realtor who actually helped me buy my house, I strongly disagree with. Yes, Sam Carr fights for property rights. I don't have a problem with property rights. I'm a homeowner, and I actually own an investment property. What I have a problem with is our community is not just made up of property owners. We have non-property owners who are renters. So this Measure C would help 5,000 renters versus a small number of property owners who are already so extremely fortunate to own million-dollar properties that it's ridiculous. So this is the issue of classism. It's the haves. I don't hear any renters coming up and saying, "Don't vote for Measure C." I hear, "We need to protect our community, and the people who own property want to keep their property and get more." That's gross. I mean, it's just, it feels like that's what Washington is doing. Let's take away the rights of poor people, elderly, disabled, children, and let's enrich the rich. I don't want to be that community. I want to be the community that I've been here for 14 years, and I'm grateful every single day to live in Pacifica. I'm grateful to own property here. I'm just, every day, that's my grateful, my gratitude, is I live here, I own property. I feel great. I feel solid. Well, renters don't get to feel like that. They don't get to feel any sense of future surety and, you know, where they're going to live. And sure, there's a small minority that can afford whatever rent increases you throw at them, but that is the minority. This issue of the Measure C, No on C campaigns, just, it's really, it's really depressing to me. It's as if the city attorney, the city studies, the staff reports don't matter. It's as if, and that's true, it's fake news, right? It's Trump. It doesn't matter, because the city attorney and the city staff don't tell the truth? No, of course they do. I trust our city staff and our city attorney to tell the truth. So Mayor O'Neill and Councilmember Vaterlos, I believe it's a violation of public trust. It's unethical and unfair to put your profession above your public office. It feels like you're Realtors first and councilmembers second. You're not taking care of the part of our community that's the most vulnerable. You're only taking care of the property owners. Shame on you.
Michelle MacIntyre, Cynthia Kaufman, Bridget Duffy.
Good evening. I'm here for No on Measure C. I was a renter in San Francisco. I had a rent-controlled apartment. Everything was great. I had all the illusion of security until my unit got sold, and I found myself looking for a new apartment in the middle of the dot-com boom. I couldn't afford anything in San Francisco. There wasn't anything available. So I found an apartment in Pacifica, and I decided I better make some life changes. I'm 30 when this has happened. I don't want this to happen to me when I'm 50. So I got out of my nonprofit job, and I began working for a biotech. And I also went in with my roommate, and we pooled our money, and we decided we were going to buy a house, and it was a great risk, and people said, "Oh, you can't do that unless you're married." But I did. So it's time to take individual responsibility. Beware of things like rent control, because you have the illusion that your lifestyle is going to be maintained. But inside the bubble of rent control, things keep going up anyway, like the cost of medicine, food, car insurance, you name it. So I'm no for Measure C. One, because it's too costly for Pacifica. I don't believe they did the math right. And two, it didn't work for me, and it is an illusion. Thank you.
Cynthia Kaufman, Bridget Duffy, and Bridget is the last card I have.
I wanted to start by saying that I'm a homeowner, and so many of us who are coming in speaking in favor of Measure C are homeowners, and one of the reasons for that is because the renters in this town are afraid. It was very distressing to me to hear Mr. Stotz talk about freedom of speech, because many of the rental agreements actually have contracts that don't allow the tenants to put signs up. I know I have a friend who recently moved to town who said, "How come all the renters on Rosita are against Measure C?" They're not. Their landlord is against Measure C. So when you talk about freedom of speech, I think it's really important to talk about who is allowed to speak. The other thing I just wanted to say is that the council put the measure on the ballot so that we get a vote. So the idea that the city council has bullied anybody is really distressing to me. The community is actually, the council did the good, hard work of coming up with a strong, sensible resolution. The city attorney vetted it intensely. The people now get to vote on it, and so there's no bit of bullying in that. And the idea, the whole thing about single-family homes is also another distressing thing. I've found this fight very distressing because of the level of disinformation and as fake news coming up from the other side. So the city specifically chose to exclude single-family homes in order to make this a more moderate measure than we have in other places, to make it more palatable for people, so that the people like myself don't have to worry about the impact on me. And when people have said, "Well, it is a tax, because people are going to pay." No. It's a fee, because the people who get the service and who are involved in that situation have to pay for it. The rest of us, it has absolutely no financial implications for us. And the other thing, one other point is this idea of let the market decide. The market has done a horrible job with housing. Housing is a basic human need. The market is not taking care of it in the Bay Area. We need to invest in housing. The private sector builds houses for rich people, because that's where you make the most profit. The guy who said it would cost $2 million is a total charlatan, and one of the things in his study was he said size doesn't matter. So a rent control thing in Montara versus a rent control thing in San Francisco, they would both cost $2 million, because that's what it costs. That's completely idiotic. This would have no impact on mom-and-pop landlords, who are good landlords, because they don't evict people for no reason, and they don't raise the rents ridiculous amounts. It's a totally moderate measure, and I'm so proud of our side for being honest. Thank you.
Okay, Bridget Duffy, and Bridget is the last card I have for oral communications.
Unfortunately, I can't find the books and the stuff that I was going to give you, but here's the newsletters. There's a couple of them, and then a couple of books, and I'll just give them to Kathy, and she can print them, and that's my promise to you. Other than that, I would like to say that this whole thing that's going on in our town is seriously concerning. We have almost like vultures descending upon our community, just like the people that were gathering signatures, who were paid by outside interests and lived outside of our community. You notice these people are not complaining about the $20 million. They weren't here when we were talking about the sewer bills. They weren't here, they're not here talking about the actual tax that is on the ballot, which is a six cents per dollar for every dollar you spend on marijuana from now on in Pacifica. That's a bona fide tax, and the people of Pacifica are being quiet as mice about it. You know why? The people of Pacifica in general, they don't mind paying taxes. We're compassionate people. We want to take care of our neighbors. We don't mind giving back. The people that are here, that are, obviously, they can't be stupid. Obviously, they have to know the facts, but they somehow refuse to, or at least act like they are incapable of absorbing the facts. So, oh, I don't have my glasses. So I'm not going to read this, but it's in the newsletter. You should look for the newsletter. I leave them at Florrie's and the Salata Cafe, and there's a whole chapter from a book called On Tyranny. It's a very short book. Chapters are sometimes one page long, and they have very good advice. And the one I wrote about in here, and the only words I can read, because they're big enough, is "Believe in the truth." Facts... Facts. Do not abandon facts. I mean, hold on. To abandon facts is to abandon freedom. So the attack that we're under is a financial attack, but I think mostly it's an attack on what we know to be true. And I think that everybody in Pacifica should really understand that things are on the line that were never on the line before, and the people have to stand up like they've never stood up before against tyranny, the tyranny of money. And that's what we're fighting here against this rent thing. The only people complaining about the fee, which is a dollar per unit per month, to the renter and to the landlord, it's not a tax. And if you own 100 units and you wind up paying $2,500, that's because you're charging people $2,500 a unit. So excuse me if we don't cry for you.
So I have no other cards for oral communications, so we're going to close the oral communications, bring it back to council. Council communications. The purpose of council communications is for council members to inform each other of items of potential interest to other council members, such as inter-agency meetings. Deirdre?
I don't have much this week, but I wanted to say thank you to the Pacifica Police Department and firefighters that were giving assistance up in the North Bay for the fires. And also, special thanks to the firefighters who still held their open house in the midst of all that. It was a really cool event. Brought my daughter and fun for everyone. Thanks.
Any, Sue Vodderlos?
I went to the Democrats' panel on marijuana. There are people against the marijuana initiative, as much as you don't believe that, and it was an interesting panel. There were two sides. I was also at a convention in Sacramento where I met a woman who spoke about the ability to increase housing for all communities in existing footprints of housing by changing single families into multi-unit buildings. She is the head of the YIMBY movement, which is yes in my backyard. I think that we could use her input here, and it might be interesting to have her come and talk someday. She is from San Francisco and young and very knowledgeable about housing.
Sue, do you agree?
Yes, I was asked to give some information. Clarinda usually comes to these meetings. Clarinda Campania has been doing UNICEF in Pacifica, so it's been here 28 years. I'm sure you've seen and heard her before, coming, children coming to your door at Halloween time, collecting for others. And the last 28 years, they've raised $90,000. Also, she is very active in our local Relay for Life, and she was informed that the Relay for Life money was also used recently in Puerto Rico, taking care of residents there who are under great distress. I went to a function called Historical Tours, and it was put on by Carol Groom and a team of folks, including Anne Leclair, who is the CEO of San Mateo County Silicon Valley Tourism. And it was about history. You've heard me speak many, many, many times about how valuable history could be to the foot traffic in our economy. And so it was well-backed by various facts, and I asked if she would, Anne Leclair would be willing to come here so we can find a time to schedule that. I think the Economic Development Committee and the city council and the staff could learn a lot about that. It was very, very inspiring and something easy to do, and we're on the road. I don't know if the student is still here from Terranova, but the city and the county and national park systems and coastal conservancy, we're all working together for almost a year now in doing our very best to get the Native Americans' history and reverence as part of the, you know, recognition of Gaspar de Portela coming up. So I actually admire all the work that has been done because we are definitely not leaving the Native American culture and history out. So I think that's it for now.
I attended the one-year anniversary of Peninsula Clean Energy's electrical generation. So that was a momentous occasion to those of us on the board, probably not to anybody else. Maybe most of you probably don't realize or haven't noticed it, but you're getting electrical energy 5% cheaper than PG&E, and it's much more renewable. It's 50% renewable and 80% greenhouse gas-free. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to inform the council that when I went to C.CAG, there was an issue before the MTC that they were looking, they were looking at how they were going to start funding some transportation projects. And it was going to be based on whether or not you hit your RENA numbers. And the RENA numbers are, the MTC tells us we have to build, you know, 100 houses. If we don't build 100 houses, we only build 20, there would be some ramifications in terms of transportation funds. So when I found that out, I came and I met with Kevin Woodhouse, the city manager, and Tina, and I believe you sent a letter out. So maybe during staff communications, if you could kind of finalize that. Just, we didn't have time to bring it to council because there was a deadline. So I just wanted you guys to know that happened. So anything else from council? Okay, staff communications.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Just a few comments, and I'll just address that one that the mayor had just mentioned. We will be sending that letter in opposition to that proposal tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I have that on my desk. As you know, this is the beginning of my third week as city manager, and just wanted to mention some highlights about getting around town. I've been, last week started going to various commission and committee meetings. I went to the Planning Commission, made some introductory comments, and listened in on that meeting. I also went to the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee meeting last week. This week, I'll be attending the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission meeting, so getting familiar with the various commissions and committees. I've also been spending time touring around the city with different department directors, which is extremely valuable. One item that I did want to mention just for public information sake is, at the previous council meeting, there was an item to elect new members to commissions and committees. And there was one item for the Emergency Preparedness Commission, which was delayed to our next council meeting to consider adding membership to that. What I wanted to mention is that the Tribune write-up of that does say that the council decided to add one member to that commission. And just clarify for public information that indeed that wasn't the case, that the item that will be forthcoming to you is to consider that, so that the council hasn't made that decision. And that completes my comments.
And Kevin, could you be sure everybody in the council gets a copy of the letter?
Yeah, to the MTC, yes.
Yeah, because it's something that I think we all need to keep track of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing and amending Chapter 9 of Title VI of the Pacifica Municipal Code by deleting Section Dash 6-Dash-902 regarding sanitary side sewer maintenance. And we have Louis.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Louis Sun, Deputy Director of Public Works, Wastewater. On May 12, 2011, the San Francisco Bay Region of the California Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a cease and desist order to the City of Pacifica, requiring the city to develop illicit discharge elimination program. The order also required the city to include language in the illicit discharge elimination program that will require the city to develop and implement a program to detect and eliminate illicit discharges. In addition, the city was required to impose requirements on private property owners to eliminate illegal drainage connections or defective sewer laterals, including any inappropriate cross-connections in discharge your own facilities. The order further required that by November 15, 2011, the city shall adapt an ordinance or amend existing ordinances to provide the city with the requisite authority to eliminate illicit discharges and to take reasonable enforcement efforts under say ordinances to eliminate, identify illicit discharges, and take reasonable enforcement action against any violators, and maintain records to document any such enforcement actions. As a result of the order, the city entered into a consent decree which required the city to meet the wastewater collection system sanitary sewer overflow reduction plan by June 30, 2011. And in response to the order, a new Section 6-Dash-13.602, excuse me, of the Pacifica Municipal Code was adopted entitled Responsibility and Standards for Maintenance of Sewer Laterals. However, the newly adopted Section 6-Dash-13.602, which provides that property owners are responsible for maintenance and repairs of side sewers connection to main sewers of the city, is in conflict with a prior Pacifica Municipal Code section. That section is 6-Dash-9.02. Section 6-Dash-9.02 provides that the city is responsible for the maintenance and repair of the side sewers connected to main sewers of the city. This conflict creates a lot of confusion, and changes are therefore necessary to eliminate it. It would be beneficial to clarify that Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 6-Dash-9.02, stated that the city was responsible only if a cleanout was present, up to grade, within two feet of the property line, and visible at all times, and that the cleanout and riser shall be constructed in accordance with the provision of the plumbing code of the city. There are a limited amount of properties, approximately 10% of the city, that met this criteria when the new ordinance was adopted. The new Section 6, Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 6-Dash-13.602, is not only required by the order, but is in line with industry standards, which typically require property owners to be responsible for maintenance and repair of side sewers connected to main sewers of the city. Sanitary sewer laterals are not considered public sewers, for it only serves individual private properties. As such, city staff recommends that Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 6-Dash-9.02, be deleted. And that concludes my presentation.
Is there any questions or clarifications from council?
So it seems to me, and I may not have this language quite straight in my head, but that the issue is from the property line to the sewer main, right?
Correct.
And so, and that, but from the, from the property line to the residence is already the responsibility of the property owner?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's really just, you know, 10, 20 feet, something like that in most cases. And I support doing this, but I wonder, why wasn't this done before?
That's a very good question, and I think in 2012, when the new code was adopted, staff wanted to make that happen at the time, but they just didn't have the time, and things got busy for them. So when I started my position almost a year ago, it was brought to me that this is something that the collection, sewer collection manager, wanted to go through this process and clean up the municipal code.
Yeah, okay. Let me see, do I have anything else? No. Okay, thank you.
I have no other lights, so I'll open up the public hearing. I have no yellow cards. So having no yellow cards and seeing no one rush to the podium, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, and if there's a discussion, make a motion. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion if everybody's agreeable.
Yeah.
I'll move to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, Amending Chapter 9 of Title VI of the Pacifica Municipal Code by Deleting Section 6-Dash-9.602 Regarding Wastewater Side Sewer Maintenance.
I'll second.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any comments? Please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Next item.
We have a break.
Okay, I have a request to take a break. So it's 8:46, will be 8:40, 8:51. Next item, okay, I have a request to take a break, so it's 8:46, will be 8:51.[374.12]
Any office of profit or trust under them shall, without the consent of Congress, accept of any present emolument officer title of any kind, whether it be from a king, a prince, or a foreign state. Mr. Trump's refusal to divest of his many and varied holdings worldwide, not exclusively his hotel holdings in the United States where he has been since he took office, hosting Kuwait, Saudi Arabia, Bahrain, Azerbaijan, Russia, Turkey, and the Industrial and Commercial Bank of China holds one of its offices in one of his hotels, the lease of which is coming up in October of 2019, just two short years from now. Given that we have clauses in the Constitution which he's been apparently willingly, since everybody's shouting at him that it's a thing he's doing, willingly violating since he took office in January, he took an oath. He lied apparently when he took that oath. We need to get rid of him. We also do need to return to city business. Thank you.
Ken Cameron, Catherine Cameron, David Alquist.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Ken Cameron. I'm from Alameda, and I'm a visitor tonight. We attended a City Council meeting in March and proposed the same kind of resolution that, as you said, not an impeachment, but an investigation of those kinds of causes that might lead to impeachment. Our City Council discussed all kinds of issues about the use of their staff time and their money and their local responsibilities. They ultimately concluded that they had a duty to support and defend the Constitution and in fact had taken an oath to that effect. We and our Council saw as early as March that this President was unfit for a whole variety of reasons. It could take all night to list all those reasons. Sure enough, these many months later, we have now 16 cities, including Los Angeles and Oakland and Berkeley and Cambridge, Massachusetts, and a city up north in Washington, the capital city Olympia, which is where I came from some years ago. Since that time, what we see now is a lot of activity around people cutting loose from Mr. Trump. Republican Senator Corker, McCain, former President Bush, and a prominent California businessman who's a Democrat is now spending $10 million. Tom Steyer is on television with a $10 million ad program, basically saying this guy is a clear and present danger to the country, to our democratic values, and to our personal sense of what it means to be President of a great country. And I'm here tonight to suggest that you too can take a position and stand up for the Constitution. Thank you very much.
Catherine Cameron, David Alquist, Bridget Duffy.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Councilmembers. I also am a visitor from Alameda, married to Ken, but I'm going to take a slightly different slant on this. I wanted to really say how impressive tonight has been for me to see democracy in action at the city level here in Pacifica and to say, this is a very precious commodity. This is a very precious thing that happened tonight. Even when there were differences of opinion, we freely expressed them, and that is part of the foundation of our democratic institutions that we're trying desperately to preserve because we are in a time when many of us feel those institutions are threatened. My name is, I think I mentioned Katie Cameron. I belong to an organization called Alameda for Impeachment, and we've been working since January, working with these many cities and towns across the country to urge these resolutions. And in doing so, I just wanted to mention that questions come up, and some of them are rather repetitive questions that happen in each location. So I wanted to, I thought it might be helpful to just go over the three most common ones. Number one, we hear the pothole question, or more seriously, the homeless question. Isn't it the job of cities to be concerned about local issues? The answer is emphatically yes, but you're also the closest governmental unit to the people. We only have our own voice unless we use a collective voice of a city. So there is that wonderful opportunity with a city government to express a larger voice than we as individuals have. And I believe that most cities, if not all, also take an oath to uphold the Constitution. So from the bottom of the lowest level of government, one might say to the highest, we're all in this game together. Does that, is that a warning or an ending?
It's a warning.
Okay. The second question that comes up is, shouldn't it be the Congress that conducts the impeachment? And I think we've covered this already, that nobody's asking a city government to conduct an impeachment investigation, but I can tell you in Alameda, there was some confusion about that, so I wanted to set the record straight. This is just urging Congress to do its job, and specifically, the Judiciary Committee in the House. The third issue that comes up is, let's wait till we get all the facts. And that's the one where I wanted to echo your comment, Councilwoman, that that's what impeachment investigations are all about. There's a real misunderstanding that we wait for Mueller to get done with his criminal investigation. This is, impeachment is not a criminal investigation per se. It's much broader than that, and it is the House Judiciary that is designated by the Constitution to conduct these investigations. Thank you for listening. I'm done. Good luck. I hope you pass it.
David Alquist, Bridget Duffy, Janet Breger.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm here tonight to remind City Council that I feel that you were put in office to run the city affairs, the city business, and for the past few months, I've felt that somehow there's been distractions, and I even heard words, we're trying to bring the community together. I'll read an email that I sent to a City Council member on Wednesday, October 4th. "The City Council needs to get back to taking care of the city. We have streets that are in need of repair and winter storms to prepare and also pending 2018 budget deficit. As a member also of VFW Post 10245, this agenda item is not city business. This item, if passed, could also affect funds coming from federal agencies. No vote is needed and get back to city business. Thank you for your time, and this is the resident of Pacifica since 1974." Thank you, and good evening.
Okay, we have Bridget Duffy, Janet Breger, Cynthia Kaufman.
Hi. I just want to say that I think it's every American's business right now. Donald Trump is not just an illegitimately empowered usurper of the presidency. He has a whole team with him. There was the entire 2016 Democratic elections in our country, which is the founding, you know, what do you call it? The cornerstone of democracy is our elections. Those elections were compromised. He lost in a compromise, so the Russians weren't that good at the hacking, because he still lost by 3 million votes. Because of the Electoral College, which is something that was invented by slave owners from the South, because they didn't count African-American people as actual people. So they had to make up for it, their lack of power, because there was only so many white people, they didn't have a lot of people votes. They invented the Electoral College. It's been used three times, once to enact the Jim Crow laws, 20 years after the abolition of slavery. Why wasn't that law abolished when we realized it, when Bush got elected? Bush got elected illegitimately as well. He did not win the popular election, and he brought us into a war that is still going on and has nearly, I mean, has crippled our economy. We are so in debt to China because of a war that was started upon a lie and has no end in sight. Congress has never approved any more war, just one approval after 9/11 and boom. You could just, you just keep taking as much money as you need. That's not conservative, that's not American, it's dangerous. This man is a danger to not only Americans, but to the entire world. He's threatening nuclear war. He denies climate disruption. He'll, he put a, the head of ExxonMobil instead of the State Department. I mean, at least they're just like cutting to the chase now. It's like, let's just, you know, why screw around with these nuances? Let's just put ExxonMobil in charge of the State Department, and then they can wage the war themselves. This is ridiculous. We not only have to impeach Donald Trump, we have to impeach the entire corporate state and everybody in our society who is taking that side of this issue. He is a misogynist and a racist. He has mental problems, and everybody that's supporting him has those same mental problems, as far as I'm concerned.
Janet Breger, Cynthia Kaufman, Steve Rappaport.
Hello, I'm Janet Breger. Why does it say three minutes? Am I getting three or two?
Three minutes to speak.
Oh, geez, I don't have that much, but one thing about that misogynist that she just said, I gotta say, people are always calling him, including Sue. I looked up, I looked it up, what Trump said. He said, "If you are a celebrity, women will let you do anything, including grab their pussy." Now, is that saying something about Trump, or is that saying something about women who are crazy about celebrities? We all are, I know. But that's what he said. I looked it up. Anyway, let's see, I've got also, Dr. Ben Carson said, "If you want somebody nice, you should have voted for me." I mean, I admit, Trump is kind of rough around the edges, but I love Trump. I am rough also around the edges, so I'm not polite unless, you know, unless, I don't know, sometimes. But the people wanted Trump. That's, they voted for him. And that thing about the 3 million voters, there was so much illegal voting, but I don't want to go into that, I have no proof. But anyway, I want to say that stock market has gone up, and unemployment has go down, the debt has gone down. He's doing a good job, I think. But of course, I can't see everything. It's like if you take the blind men, and you have an elephant, and they have to identify what that elephant is. One person touches the tail and says it's a snake, one person touches the leg and says it's a tree trunk, and frankly, I forgot the rest, but you get the idea. That was in college and 50 years ago, or maybe 60, I can't count. Well, let's see. Oh, about Obama, I voted for him because he said he was going to get us out of Iraq. So he did. He pulled us out of Iraq, and what happens? He left a, he didn't have any timing, and he left a vacuum. I don't know that personally, that's what I heard. He leaves a vacuum, and that's how ISIS got in, the big problem. So Obama, he's polite, and everybody likes him, but you know, sometimes it's not so good to get someone from the bottom, because they work hard and they look for celebrities. Look at, Obama loves celebrities. Where, you know, you get someone who's rich, and he sort of knows who he is, and he's not overwhelmed with celebrities, and he's not overwhelmed with making everybody happy and saying just the right thing. And, well, that's the main thing I have to say about that. About Measure C, you know, if you pass it...
Your time is up.
You're giving property rights to the tenants, that's all.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Well, okay, I got it.
Okay, so Steve Rappaport, Delia McGrath, Amy Kaplan.
Hi, thank you. It's Steve Rappaport. I teach martial arts in San Francisco, live in Shark Park in Pacifica. I want to thank John Keener for bringing this up again. On September 11th, this chamber postponed a vote on impeachment resolution because there were not enough votes to pass. Councilmember DeGray stated she felt it was premature based on the more recent changes that he's made regarding talking across the island, being more open to things. He seems to be going back on threats. She would prefer to put it off to the future, maybe October, to see what changes there have been. How's that worked out? Mayor O'Neill contradicted himself, saying he supports the impeachment, then stating he can't support this because he was concerned about going further away from Pacifica's business. Can you not do both? Can you not do Pacifica's business and uphold your oath of office by supporting the Constitution of the United States? Maybe you still think that now's not the time. If now's not a good time to impeach Trump, when would be a good time? After a nuclear conflagration on the Korean Peninsula kills millions? After thousands of brown American citizens die in Puerto Rico because they don't have clean water? After we complete the transition to an authoritarian state led by a strong-armed dictator and his generals? Maybe in 2018, after elections that are neither free nor fair, because the Republicans know they can't win another majority without Russian hacking, gerrymandering, voter suppression, and billions of dollars and rubles in dark money from the Mercers, the Koch Brothers, and the Kremlin? When any of these inevitabilities come to pass, would you send your thoughts and prayers? Or should we do our duties as citizens charged with defending the Constitution and go ahead and increase the volume of our demands to impeach Trump? Maybe you're worried that Pence is even worse. When Pence is the malignantly narcissistic authoritarian, white supremacist president, we'll deal with him. In the meantime, we'll deal with a functionally impaired sociopath in front of us who thinks his comfy chair in the Oval Office is the damned Iron Throne. Maybe you think Trump will help us win in 2018. We're making a crass political calculation while our republic is under grave threat is the action of an opportunist, not that of a genuine patriot who cares deeply about the Constitution, the rule of law, and the sovereignty of the United States of America. Will it make us a target of the federal government? As local officials, you swore an oath of office to support the Constitution of the United States. Standing up to a tyrannical and increasingly authoritarian president who disdains, diminishes, and dams the Constitution is your solemn civic duty. You stand up to bullies, always. That requires courage, leadership, and moral rectitude. We, the people, expect nothing less from our elected leaders. Thank you.
Delia McGrath, Amy Kaplan, and Heather Lozano. Lozano or Lozano, sorry.
Good evening. I would be so proud of this City Council if you did the business of signing on to promote the impeachment of Donald Trump. Thank you.
Amy Kaplan, Heather Lozano, and then...
Hey, Steve Rappaport just said everything I wanted to say, but I just want to emphasize the part about Trump's actions and inactions in Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands, and he is sworn to protect and defend the citizens of the United States. And do we want him in charge if there's a massive earthquake here in the Bay Area, or if the peninsula, you know, is destroyed by fire? Do we really want that guy to be the one that's going to help us in our time of need? Thank you.
Heather Lozano.
Thank you, Council. This is my first time ever coming and speaking publicly, so I'm really excited. Sad that it has to be under these circumstances. I am a Pacifica resident, a homeowner, and a parent, and I can definitely tell you that it is up to us locally to say that what is going on right now is not acceptable in Washington, and this is how we do it. So I encourage you to vote yes on this, because if we don't do it, who will? I think it will take a lot of courage for you to do that, just like it's taking me a lot of courage to even be here and speak. I think anyone with half a brain and some just ability to observe what's going on can say, with a very long list that none of us have time to go over, that everything that has gone on since January has been just breaking every rule that we all take for granted, obviously. I think the one positive thing that has come from this presidency is that people like me are wanting to get involved, whereas they weren't before, and I think that's what led us to this problem. So please, vote yes. Make us proud. Add us to the list of the resistance that's really needed right now. Thank you.
Okay, then Cynthia, I have a card, and there's, no? Okay. Okay, so I have no other cards on this item. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, I closed the public comments on this item. Bring it back to Council for discussion. Sue Vonnell?
Again, I find this a really hard issue. I have indicated some things that Trump has said that I didn't like, many. I think that we serve to, to serve the city of Pacifica, to deal with our local issues, which for the last several months, we have not done at all. We are dealing with federal issues, and we keep on dealing with federal issues. I have the same points I had with sanctuary city, that why do we want to call attention to ourselves? Do you see what Trump did to the cities that are sanctuary cities? He went in and pulled 34 illegal immigrants out of sanctuary cities just because they were sanctuary cities, and I am afraid of that. I listened to Jackie Speer, who said, "Don't do anything now. We need to wait until next year. We need to wait until things change, and then we can make our decisions." So that's my decision on this tonight.
John? I saw you reaching.
Obviously, I support this resolution, and, but, you know, I think there is room for people that, Councilmembers, that believe that he should be impeached, to not vote in favor of this resolution for various reasons. Myself, I intend to. I intend to vote for it, and I hope it passes.
Sue DeGray?
All right, so I would have no problem with Mr. Trump being impeached. However, my bigger concern is the balances, the checks and balances, which I think that I've been kind of hard on Congress for many years now. When I was young, even the party conversations within the Republican Party, there were arguments, like this issue and that issue. On the issues, they beat it out in front of us on TV. Same thing with the Democrats within the party. There were differences. There wasn't this litmus test that everybody gets behind something. They hashed it out. And my concern, and I blame it a little bit on talk radio, which is actually entertainment, which has unfortunately sucked people into only hearing their passion and their point of view and not the other side's. And what we see in our country over these years is finger pointing, just constant, constant, constant finger pointing, whereas we used to look for ways of common ground within our passions. Passionate for this and passionate for that, but where do we agree? Is there some way we could be united for the sake of all of us and move forward? And I'm not saying given up your passions, I'm saying look for ways to get along together. We don't see that in our city anymore either. It's very disturbing to see the constant finger pointing. And so I'm concerned about issues, and I'm concerned about checks and balances. So Congress has the right and ability to impeach. Congress has the right and ability to wage war. We've been at war, and they have not declared war. I find Congress, since the Bush times, when I became more alert to this, hiding behind whoever's the president and letting the president do whatever. And presently, I think unfortunately, the majority of Congress is hiding behind this president. There are things they can do, and I would much rather be protecting our checks and balances and saying to the Congress, "You need to shape up. This guy is a problem. Where are you?" And so the intro is, "Let's get after Congress to research impeaching him. Let's get after Congress to do its job." I'm really upset with Congress, and that would be any party that's up there, is that you just don't seem to want to cross that aisle to do anything because it might impound, put your party in a problem area. So, and where do we, the citizens, come in? Where do we fit in that? We know that people did not vote. Did not vote. That's one of our most fundamental strengths of our country, is the right and the opportunity to vote. We need to look at ourselves and to help one another to be better able to be engaged, to be alert, to be engaged, and to be on the ground, be more active so we can, don't get into these situations. So that Congress has a lot of powers, which it is not exercising. That is very concerning to me. So I never know until I push that button which way I'm going. But right at the moment, I'm saying, if I push that button to say to you, Congress, "Consider impeaching the president," I am exonerating you. I'm saying, "Congress, you're not part of the problem. You can be our salvation. You go and study impeaching him and do it." I'd say, "You are the Congress, and you're not, you're not being congressional." I would say, "We should be spending our time praising those Republicans who stand up." So John McCain did it, Susan Collins did it, Lisa something or other did it. I mean, those people went against their party litmus test. Why? Because their public, their public was getting through to them. So the other reason why I'm not too concerned about saying, "Congress, please study the need to impeach the president," is because we are in an area where our congresspersons are already, I've seen them on, out there in Congress, calling for impeachment. If I thought it would really make a difference of what Pacifica is choosing to do this, to say that, I would do it, because I think he needs to get out of here. My concern and the reason at the moment that I don't want to vote for this is because I feel that it would be watering down our resolve to have the three branches of checks and balances. So that's kind of where I'm at. I don't feel compelled to do this in order to say two things. Checks and balances, figure out a way of going after Congress. And the other thing is, did I just miss the other thing? Well, mainly, that's, that's the main thing, is the check, the checks and the balances. And then for us to go after ourselves and to say, we, you know, united we stand. We are letting ourselves be divided. I'm very worried about this country from division. United we stand. That means we have to speak the truth, search the truth, be willing to sit down and argue it out, and not turn away saying, "You're a bunch of dummies, or you're this, you're that," and go on. I just really worry about the three branches of checks and balances, and the only one who's going to cure that is the American public. So we need to be talking to our relatives and friends in those areas, like where Susan Collins is and Lisa. They're already talking. Those are not states like ours. They're already speaking common sense. So we need to be helping those other states to get to it. So I think that being expressive to congresspeople of the other party who are daring enough So I think that being expressive to congresspeople of the other party who are daring enough to speak out because they are listening to common sense people, I think that's where we need to be supportive. And I do think it's our, the things we've been doing in the past, we have been doing our constitutional. We all took the oath. The sanctuary city thing was, was a different thing. Sanctuary thing was saying, "We're going to exercise those protections right here and now." I guess I'm not allowed to say anything about measure Cs. I'll stick it all under sanctuary city. Whereas looking towards not having any present citizen or resident just upped and kicked out for whatever reason. So, yeah, I think that's part of our constitutional duty. So that's my piece for now.
Deirdre?
So, a lot of this is going to be reminiscent of what I said a few weeks ago. So, but just to kind of touch on a few points that were made tonight. You know, in this resolution, it does say that a copy of this resolution be transmitted officially to our Congresswoman Jackie Speer, goes on to say about Kevin Mullins, Sherri Hill, all those people. So why are, you know, the question was posed, like, why, why are they not doing something? Well, this is us encouraging them to do something. So there's, there's a top-down approach and then there's, there's, there's a bottoms-up approach. And we're, we're on the bottom. We're, we're the boots on the ground. So who is the people, who are the people that are going to come together? In my opinion, it's us. We are the people here. We are the people, just like somebody came to you and asked to bring this to us to talk about. So how do, so the, so to me, the answer to the question, how do we force Congress to do their job? This is how we do it. The, I agree with a lot of things that were said tonight, that our institutions are being threatened, that we are the closest to the, to the larger government. And it is our job, it is our responsibility to be the voice of the people. And, but I want to, I want to make sure that we're not doing things out of, out of fear. We're doing them out of courageousness and because we are strong and because we, we want to come together. So, so from my perspective, this is not about impeachment. It's about the investigation. It's, it's into the presidency and his non-compliance with a lot of things, conflicts of interest, the standards that we are all held accountable for, to our voters, that our president should be held to the same standard, as far as I'm concerned. He's in violation and, and this needs, he needs to be investigated. So I support the idea of this investigation. I, you know, councilmember degree, I apologize, but this harkens back to the investigation into your address. So I know I keep bringing that up, but we, we just, we're just asking the same thing. We're asking the same thing that people have asked, "Do you be investigated for?" We're doing the same thing to our president. He's, he's being held to a different standard and, and that's a top-down approach that is not okay. That, that, you know, and it's going to take courage, just like Heather, you came here and talked tonight. That was very courageous of you. And I'm asking that we all be courageous too. I hear the same people saying, you know, "He's, he's not doing the right thing. He's, you know, he's, he's all these terrible things, but yet we can't stand up." And I, and I have a problem with that. So this is me as a public official and as a voter, asking that we hold this president accountable. If, if, if the executive branch is having issues doing this, this is unfortunately the only way I see this method for, for getting greater visibility to everyone. It's a mobilization of the citizens of the United States. If, if they won't do it, who will? And if it's not us, who's going to do it? And if it's not now, and this is, you know, common speak, but then when? So I'm asking everyone to be courageous tonight. I respect your vote, but I'm asking you to be courageous and please don't vote out of fear because we are the people. That's it.
So I have to admit, I kind of hate these, just these kind of votes because I don't disagree with anything that was said at the podium. I don't think this guy is a very good president. I don't think he's fit for office. I think, you know, he probably, he should be impeached, but Congress is doing what they're supposed to do. They are having some investigations. They're going through it. Unfortunately, Nunes is the chair of the committee and he seems to be non-comm. But I think there, but on the other hand, everybody said, you know, "I should support the Constitution. That's the oath I took." And that is true. But there is another part of the Constitution that says, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a perfect union and promote the general welfare of the citizens." Today, in our consent calendar, we approved a FEMA grant from the federal government, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That is discretionary. It was under review and review means to consider something in order to make changes in it, study it, or give an opinion about it. So the, you know, seventeen cities have done this, that's a, that's a very small number. And we are, and I'm concerned that if we raise the flag up and we're told that we may lose more funding. That was expressed to us by our Congresswoman and our state senator, that we are, you know, we could lose up to maybe twenty-two million dollars in funding for storm repairs, et cetera, infrastructure repairs, et cetera. So I do feel I am supporting the constitute, my oath, by saying promoting the general welfare of Pacifica. And that is what I think we need to do. And I am concerned about, keep going off topic for the many issues this town is facing and the hardships we're going to be having next year with the budget, with the budgets we are going to be dealing with. So I will be voting no for this resolution. Let's see, Sue'd agree?
All right, so I have a question. So are you saying that Congressman Speer and anybody else called regarding impeachment?
No.
Okay. So as for-
Who said that they said to do this later or wait till next year?
No, that was me. That was, oh, I'm sorry. No, you're talking about last-
This is confusing.
Yeah. I said maybe it was too early at the last meeting to wait for October. And in the meantime, I've done a lot of soul searching and I, so I don't, I don't know where it's considered lack of courage on my side to vote no. I want my vote for no to be pretty clear. I'm doing it because I think it's letting Congress off the hook and I want strong checks and balances and we have a lot of work to do for that. Do I think that council has been off target onto other things rather than what they need to be on? Absolutely not. I think we've been right on target on everything and I certainly applaud the public's concern and I applaud your votes. If our Congress congressional area wasn't as vocal and hard pushing as I see them being on all issues, including this one, I would possibly vote differently. I don't know. The, the not letting Congress off the hook, and I'm not talking about those that are trying to do their job. I'm talking about those who are just sitting by and hiding behind whatever, in this case, this president, and just letting it happen, even although, and doing some research, I see where, just like John McCain and Susan Collins, they have come forth and crossed and done their duty as congresspersons and it obviously made a difference. So, so at this moment, I am still saying no for those particular reasons. And that's not because I'm afraid of anything FEMA is going to do, anything he's going to do, anything anybody's going to do. I'm afraid that we are passing over, as I said, what I feel is the real lack of leadership and letting finger pointing going on and litmus tests for protecting whatever the next election is going to do.
John?
Well, I count three votes, three no votes for this. It's pretty clear. So I've, I will not make a motion in favor of this resolution.
So rather than, let's just say have it a no vote, because I don't think anybody here particularly likes the guy, are you willing just to withdraw it from the, can we just withdraw it from the agenda?
No, I object. I'm sorry. My reasons, my reasons for no are, no, I don't, I'm not going to hide behind, no way.
Okay.
No, I, I'm saying that I won't make a motion.
Okay.
Right.
Right.
Are you open at all to maybe massaging this a little bit so we remove words like of impeachment and stuff like that and-
Of what?
Remove some of the, looking at the resolution, looking at something where we send a letter to our congressperson and senators that says, "We are very concerned," something to the effect, I'm just throwing, thinking out loud here, "We're very concerned about the actions of the president and the, the direction the country seems to be going and to remove the parts about impeachment, et cetera." Is anybody open to that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I would be, be open to anything, actually.
So you're saying this is going to our personal congresspersons only? Is that what you're saying?
Our congressperson, because the rest of them frankly don't really care. You know, and basically instead of an actual, you know, a letter from the city council that says, "We are very concerned about the," I'm just throwing words out, I mean-
Right, right.
Yeah. That we're very concerned about the direction the country is taking, we are concerned about some of the policies of the president administration, and we would urge Congress to take whatever action they feel is necessary in the future. Something to that effect. Because I'm not comfortable doing the word impeach because I think that's jumping and the list of sins he has, which I don't disagree, every one of them is a sin. I'd just throw that out for discussion.
I'd be in support of that if we could make sure that the word investigation is included in there.
Okay, so would we, the-
So you just said policies, we're concerned about policies, we're concerned about-
Direction.
But you didn't get direction, but that's not actually-
Tweets.
-the intention of this at all.
Right. The tweets, yeah.
So you're still only asking for this to go to our congressperson? Is that right?
Yeah.
And so is there a problem with saying, "Thank you for being so outspoken"?
I have no problem with that.
And follow, you know, I'd have to look at the words and put them somewhere else as well.
Okay, do we, do we want to have like some sort of subcommittee come back next, next meeting?
Well, or, or if, you know, I think you've heard enough input with the idea of having the council send a letter. The mayor could work with the city manager to draft a letter if the council wanted to delegate that authority to the mayor to draft a letter along the lines of what council has directed or would like to direct further, and then that would not have to come back to the council.
So are we still talking about a resolution or a-
No, a letter.
A sense of the council, basically, kind of thing.
I think it would have to come back to the council, just because I, I think there will be some controversy over the exact wording, but, but I, I agree with the rest of it. The, the mayor and the city manager can sit down and bang out a draft and, and bring it to the next council meeting. That's, that's my opinion.
So I'm reluctant to send things off because we never seem to come back, but-
No, it'll be back in October, October, whatever, twenty-seventh, November twenty-seventh, is it? Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so did we decide that it was going to, some of the verbiage in there? Because I think we just kind of glazed over that.
I mean, I would, go ahead, John, sorry.
Oh, I, I think your suggestion about the word investigation, that, that is suggested to be in there.
Okay. And then, and then the, the, to wrap it up, it would be sent to all of our government officials that is in the, the bottom three lines of this resolution, of the proposed resolution that's not being voted on tonight?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
Right.
So, and I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with simply saying a letter to the congresspersons and sending it all out, "Thank you for your, for being active congresspersons in pursuing, doing your congressional, doing your congressional duty to pursue the concerns regarding this." I don't have a problem with that.
That's great.
Okay, so I will, I will work with the city manager. I think he's keeping copious notes there. From the sense of the council, we'll come back on November twenty-seventh. And do we need to do anything further on this? No? Okay.
That's clear direction.
So moving on to, as I'm assuming the council's set, okay. So moving on to the last item on our agenda, Climate Action Plan Implementation Report.
Yeah, thank, thank you Mayor O'Neill and councilmembers. I'm going to make a few introductory comments on this item and then turn it over to Director Waremeister and Ms. O'Connor. What you have before you is the annual update of progress, essentially a progress report on Pacifica's climate action plan. And I just want to highlight a couple key points. The, the climate action plan actually requires an annual update and then that trigger, that update which you, is before you tonight to receive and file, then triggers a thirty-day public comment period, which staff will then receive comments. Additionally, what I wanted to point out is some of the update information is suggesting in the consultant review in the report, is suggesting that we at some point in the future look at revising the climate action plan. And the recommendation before you tonight is direct staff to come back to the council within the context of our budget setting for next fiscal year, to address the process that we could pursue for updating the climate action plan, all the while continuing to implement actions in the climate action plan. So that's, that's the important point that I want to emphasize. Additionally, part of that recommendation is engaging the community. And prior to this meeting, I did reach out to some of the Pacifican citizens that had worked on the development of the climate action plan to, to let them know that, that we look for, I look forward to meeting them, but engaging in discussion through that process. So those are just some key points and then staff will get into the details of the Climate Action Plan Progress Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I am Assistant Planner Bonnie O'Connor. I will be presenting the 2017 Climate Action Plan Implementation Report. So providing just an overview, the city council adopted the Climate Action Plan, or the CAP, in July of 2014. The purpose was to identify measures to be implemented and actions the city of Pacifica can take in order to achieve greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. The goal was to reduce total community-wide emissions by thirty-five percent below twenty, two thousand and five levels by 2020 and eighty percent below nineteen ninety levels by 2050. The implementation report provides the city and the public with an overview of the progress on the implementation of the CAP. Measures within the CAP address four emission sources, including energy, transportation, solid waste, and water. The CAP organizes these measures into three timeframes, including near-term, midterm, and long-term. Highlighting the city's progress on the energy measures, the city council approved various property-assessed clean energy or PACE programs, providers to operate in Pacifica in September 2016. The PACE program provides property owners with additional financing alternatives for authorized energy and water-efficient improvements. Property owners can use the money to make the authorized improvements and help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and water use. As of July 31st, 2017, there were six hundred and twenty-five interconnected residential solar installations in Pacifica. Between October 2016 and September 2017, ninety-one solar building permits were issued. And lastly, the city is purchasing Peninsula Clean Energy Eco Plus-generated electricity and I will get into Peninsula Clean Energy in just here. So the city of Pacifica participates in Peninsula Clean Energy, or PCE, which is a program that the CAP does not consider. PCE purchases power- that the CAP does not consider. PCE purchases power from renewable energy resources, which directly reduces GHGs. Participation in this program further reduces the city's GHG emissions than what is considered in the CAP. PCE was rolled out to the community in October 2016. PCE offers two products, the Eco+, which is 50% renewable, and Eco-100, which is 100% renewable energy. The community was automatically enrolled into the Eco+ program in October 2016. And as of October 2017, the city's op-out rate of the PCE program was 2.7%, which is above the county average of 2%. And the city's opt-up percentage was 0.07%, which is below the county-wide average of 1.7. These start... These stats are as of August... I'm sorry. These stats are as of October 2017, which are slightly updated from the 2017 implementation report. Just for additional information, this... These stats were provided from PCE regarding its projected cost savings and GHG reductions. It projects to reduce... Or projects to have an annual savings of nearly a half million dollars and avoids nearly 17.8 million projected pounds of GHG emissions and having the equivalent carbon sequestered by 9,500 acres of forestland. Highlighting the city's progress on transportation measures, the Palmetto Streetscape Project includes north and southbound bike lanes, bike racks, and traffic calming corner bulbs. In June 2017, council resolved to designate the Pacifica Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission as the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or PBAC. At PBAC, the commissioners will assist in preparation of and reviewing long-range planning for city recreation, making recommendations concerning the beautification development and improvement of parks, beaches, and recreational services, and coordinating the recreation and park services with programs of other governmental interests or agencies. The city applied for grant funding from Safe Routes to School Program to install pedestrian bulbouts with bio-retention planters for Cabrillo School and Terranova High School. Pacifica received a Metropolitan Transportation Commission grant to install 100 curb ramps throughout Pacifica. Locations are still to be determined, but installation is tentatively scheduled for fiscal year 2018, 2019. The bulbout and curb ramp design features would improve pedestrian facilities and calm traffic, which would improve the walkability of surrounding areas. In August 2017, council adopted zoning amendments, which would require new and major alteration of commercial and municipal properties to incorporate electrical vehicle charging stations. The building code was amended in 2017 as well to include streamlined permitting processes for electrical vehicle charging stations and electrical vehicle supply equipment in new residential. Installation of adaptive traffic signals at Highway 1 intersections of Rena Del Mar and Fassler Avenues will be commencing. The adaptive traffic signals detect the traffic demand in real time through the use of cameras and in ground detector loops, allowing it to make immediate adjustments to traffic signalization to address current traffic conditions. The adaptive signals will alleviate some congestion along Rena Del Mar associated with the start time of Valley Mar School. The city's been promoting the City and County Association of Governments of San Mateo's pilot program, Carpool in San Mateo County, to encourage utilization of the Carpool Networking Application Scoop, and has been pursuing a Bay Area Air Quality Management District grant to purchase more electric vehicles and to fund the installation of public electric vehicle charging stations. Highlighting the city's progress on solid waste measures, municipal waste is collected and processed by Recology of the Coast, which has reported a 76% diversion rate in 2017. Highlighting the city's progress on water measures, as part of the council's adoption of the Triennial California Building Code update in 2016, the Green Building Standard Code regarding outdoor water use for both residential and commercial projects was amended to require all new landscaped areas requiring a building permit, plan check, or design review to comply with the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. The city's partner agency, North Coast County Water District, continues to promote various water conservation incentives and conducts multiple public outreach efforts to encourage public participation in water conservation efforts. Regarding highlights of the city's progress on education and outreach, a webpage has been created on the City of Pacifica website, which is acting as a clearinghouse of information regarding funding opportunities, education, and other assistance to supporting the measures of our CAP. Public comments on the 2016 implementation report. Nine comment letters were received. All comments were addressed in the 2017 implementation report. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District's comments were reviewed by DNVGL. DNVGL is a private consulting firm with expertise in evaluating GHGs and carbon footprints. DNVGL concurred with the Bay Area Air Quality Management Districts, or BACMids, concerns regarding overestimation of GHG reductions associated with specific measures. DNVGL calculated that with the revised calculations to the overestimated measures and the estimated emissions avoided from PCE. The specific... The city is projected to be on track to meet the state's AB 32 goals of 15% below 2005 emission levels by 2020. However, DNVGL does not expect that the city will achieve its goal of 35% below 2005 emissions levels by 2020. DNVGL estimates that Pacifica will reduce emissions by 24.3% below 2005 emission levels if all CAP measures are fully implemented by 2020. DNVGL will be inventorying the city's 2015 GHG emissions under funding provided by the regionally integrated Climate Action Plan Planning Suite. Results are expected to be provided by December 2017. The release of this climate action plan...
Bonnie, I was just going to ask, for the benefit of the public that doesn't know all the acronyms, DNVGL, GHG means?
DNVGL is unfortunately an acronym that I can't even spell out or give you the complete name for. It's the name of a consulting firm that has some Swedish background, so those letters represent Swedish or...
People in Switzerland.
So their official name is DNVGL. GHG, I'm sorry, is greenhouse gas.
So an outfit in Sweden or Switzerland we can't pronounce and don't know their name is giving us the greenhouse gas emissions for Pacifica?
Well, that... Yeah, that's the background of the company, but they are a local-based company.
Okay.
The release of this Climate Action Plan Implementation Report will open up a 30-day public comment period to allow the community's input on the CAP. Comments will be reviewed and utilized when determining future implementation strategies. And comments can be sent to myself at the address listed here or emailed to me at the email address provided. Comments will be accepted until November 22nd, 2017.
Our 60th anniversary. Okay.
And as City Manager Woodhouse stated, the recommendation for this evening, based on the feedback provided from DNVGL, it's for council direction to evaluate during fiscal year 2018 and 19 budget development, the most effective process for beginning an update to the CAP, including community engagement while continuing with CAP implementation and some measures for consideration. And that concludes my presentation.
All I have to do is...
Okay. Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
John?
Just one question. Can you elaborate on the recology's diversion rate a little bit? Just what is it?
They have reported a 76% diversion rate. The goal of the CAP was to meet a 75% diversion rate by 2020.
But what is... What is the diversion rate?
76%.
I think a definition.
The definition.
Sorry, my name is Tina Waremeister. I'm Planning Director. Diversion rate means that it's material that's diverted from going into landfills. So it's either composted or recycled.
Great. Do we have a breakdown of how much is recycled and how much is composted by chance?
I don't have that breakdown. They didn't provide me with that information. I could reach out to them to see if they have that data.
Thank you.
Any other yellow light? Any other red lights?
Your questions or comments, or what are you talking about?
I'm just talking questions right now, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Can you just put up the last slide you had of your recommendations or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
And then I'm fine for now? Thank you. That's fine with me. I don't have any questions at the moment.
Oh, okay. So seeing nobody at the council, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have three cards. Three minutes each. Bridget Duffy, Cynthia Kaufman, Celeste Langella.
Both Bridget Duffy and Celeste Langella are gone.
Oh, wow. Okay, so it's only you? Okay, then you can talk.
All right, then. But I won't talk forever, I promise. So first, I just want to say I'm speaking for the Pacifica Climate Committee, that we're totally thrilled with this new report. It seems to me that this strange consulting company with a strange acronym name is doing a really good job. I know we had some real concerns. We worked... The Pacifica Climate Committee worked really hard on coming up with proposals. A few of our members were on the Climate Action Plan team, worked very hard. And the consultants we worked with actually, that you worked with at that point, were not all that great, and the numbers were a little bit funky. So it's really nice to see us coming back with some much more professional work. And we're really excited to work with the city to come up with some more ideas for some measures that would strengthen what we already have. And then I did want to also say that we're working on an event to try to encourage rooftop solar, so we're going to want to work with the city on that. And we've been in discussions with Samtrans, and there's been talk about bringing back the express bus, which I think would be tremendously important to reducing the greenhouse gas emissions from Pacifica. And that seems to be stalled out right now, so I'm really hoping we can kind of get a little bit more of a push from the city with Samtrans. So really, I think everybody from the Climate Committee just wanted to say how excited we are that Kevin Woodhouse is here, and that we think you guys did a fabulous job. Thanks.
Okay, two more cards. Amy Kaplan and Dan Stecknick.
Hi, again. I'm a new member of the Climate Committee, and I'm obsessed with climate change, actually. And I just want to say thank you so much for, like, really taking this seriously, because it's going to be faster than expected and worse than expected. And so there's like... There's so many other factors, right, other than sea level change and other than drought and other than fire to be considered, such as ocean acidification, ocean anoxia, I mean, and on and on and on and on, methane release and things like that. And so it's really imperative that this is actually like a primary goal of, you know, everyone to do whatever they can to reduce greenhouse gases, because our future actually really depends on it. It's not optional. It's mandatory. So thank you so much.
Dan Stecknick, and Dan is the last card I have.
I'd just like to thank staff and council for applying for the Safe Routes to School for Cabrillo Schools. That's a really dangerous intersection. I was there two days ago at 8:00 AM. In a 15-minute span, I counted seven different cars that blew that red light. Sorry, blew that stop sign there. There also continue to be, for almost two years now, a bike lane that's completely abraded away, almost exactly in the location where we had the water main leak this weekend. But there's kids that ride their bikes to school there every day on that turn, and the lane is just completely missing between Cabrillo School and the De Solo-Anza intersection. Sorry, De Solo-Crespi intersection. Thank you.
Okay, I have no other yellow cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak, closing the public hearing, bringing it back to council? And I guess we need a motion to accept this, unless there's more discussion. Sue, do you agree?
Yes, I'm fine with accepting it. I would hope, though, that council takes a different type of leadership and really lobbies for aggressive lobbying. For example, public transportation is 50% of our problem, and that's huge. And we've done all kinds of conversations with Samtrans, TA, et cetera, et cetera. We've had shuttles and everything else. But we seem to be lacking in our ability to market what we get well, and so we lose it. And, you know, just met a senior yesterday who may be facing not being able to drive. I'm a senior. Any one of us of any age could have a stroke or an accident, and you're boxed in. You are just plain boxed in. And I think, council, I'm encouraging us to take a very, very strong leadership issue in the Climate Action Plan on public transportation. And that would engage in the public, obviously, engaging the school... Two school districts, certainly going for better bicycle paths. I just think that, in working with whoever it is that can help us to show that this city needs robust, robust, comprehensive buses. Just the express bus is important. It's very valuable. But it's not enough. It is sorely not enough. And that's 50% of our emissions. So I'm urging us to please take that particular aspect and assertiveness, a little bit more assertiveness as a city on climate action, but in particular that aspect.
Hey, I don't know who was first, so Sue.
I've said this before, but every day I go against traffic, and every day I look at all the cars, and there's one person in every single car going towards San Francisco. I think that's a huge issue. I think if we advertised SCOOP or any one of those other methods of people trying to get together in cars, I think it would make a huge difference, because those single drivers are a big problem everywhere. And I don't know how you could... I don't think people are going to take the bus. I mean, you can try to get an express bus. I think that would help. But to try to get people to actually carpool would make a big difference.
Deirdre?
Thanks for bringing this together, and I... Thanks for also working with the Climate Committee on the next step here, too. Has there been any talk, from your perspective or any impact from your perspective, on the removal of any climate change information from the EPA's website that acts as some guidance to our policies?
I have not heard about that, have you?
Uh-uh.
Okay. It's kind of been in the news for a while, but it recently popped up again two days ago. So I don't know how that'll affect us, but I'm sure that our consulting company are experts. But they're removing the actual climate science from the EPA's website that had been traditionally used as tools for us to create policies. So it's just something we want to keep our eye on.
I did hear that, yeah. John?
First of all, on carpools, the SCOOP website is being promoted by the county, as Councilmember Vadoas knows. So the promotion is $2 off, I believe, $2 off for each driver and passenger for trips either initiating in San Mateo County or ending in San Mateo County. And it would be just fabulous if this could get wider play, perhaps in Pacifica Connects or something like that, right? Perhaps multiple times. And this promotion will last, you know, until the money runs out. It's a million dollars over the whole county, so. It's a million dollars over the whole county, so. And I agree, I think that is the best short-term hope for reducing the number of cars on the road. And the buses, an express bus to San Francisco like we used to have years ago would be good. It was full going up. Of course, if it comes back, it has to come back empty and fill up again. I would like to see an express bus to the Coma Bart Station, and I've been advocating for that for a couple of years, but, you know, Sam Trans is not the most receptive agency to people advocating for one thing or another. And, you know, in part, I can understand that, but their model seems to be to have buses going all over the place and making, you know, stops everywhere possible, rather than making just a very few stops along Highway 1 on their way to, you know, the Coma Bart Station. And so, I, you know, I would like to see a little bit more on this other side of the You know, years ago, also, we had buses that would pull off on the freeway, you know, those strange little off-ramps that you see on Highway 1. Those are for buses, and people would catch the buses there. And that's part of my idea about express buses. I've tried to get Sam Trans interested in that, and hasn't taken so far. At any rate, this report is a major step forward from last year, and it's really great. And we can, we'll look forward to having some input from the public about what else ought to go into the climate action plan next year during the budget process, like you said. And, you know, just also, until last year, one of the things that the Climate Committee was complaining about was that the climate action plan provided for, I think, a halftime person to work on this. And last year was the first time there'd been any work done on this at all. And so, it was, you know, a small wonder that, you know, the first effort was maybe not the greatest, but this is, like I said, a great improvement, and we'll look forward to more improvements. And thank you very much.
Kevin? I don't know if maybe another council member might remember, but we usually have an annual, on an annual basis, a representative from Sam Trans comes and gives us a presentation. And I don't recall if we had one this year. Did we? Was it back in April or something?
It was early in the year, yeah.
Okay, so, being you're kinda new, maybe if you can arrange the, for that, and it might be good if we could actually have specific questions from council ahead of time, sent to him to get answered, and maybe even Lori Tinfo had started that City Hall Listens, I don't know what you want to call it, and maybe opened that up to the public again and get questions from the public in that way.
Can I just make a comment on that? There was a forum, I think it was kind of late last year...
I remember that, yeah.
Where they did, Sam Trans was presented with a very long list of wants from the community, so we could also dig that up.
Right, I was just thinking it'd be nice, I mean, because it is about the time of year they come. And I would really be curious to see what amount of traffic comes down from Half Moon Bay south of the slide, and if it would be feasible for an express bus to come, leave Half Moon Bay, come all the way up and go to San Francisco, you know, just picking people up as it comes along. So, maybe we can't support it, but maybe with the coast side and Half Moon Bay, we could.
Yeah.
I think we know those numbers. I mean, we know that when the slide was closed, we were a cul-de-sac, and we had no traffic at all. So, I think it's definitely a regional issue, not just a Pacifica issue, and it does go all the way down the coast.
That was 20 years ago, too.
Still.
No, no, if it closed today, it would still be the same results, I'm sure.
Yeah, we...
The storms of '82.
We have numbers from about three or four years ago, anyway.
Because I was here, and I wasn't here in '82.
And, yeah, so you can calculate how many drivers there were back then. And my opinion is that there are somewhat more now, coming through from the south coast side through Pacifica.
So, Sam Trans did say that they were, this year, they said they were studying Pacifica, too, so we could request an update from them.
Is there any other questions for Bonnie or Tina?
Just a comment about Sam Trans, since we're on this topic. You know, their business model is to lose money hand over fist. They, I think they make something like 15% of their revenues actually come from fares. And that's including, you know, the cash cow. Their cash cow are routes that run along El Camino Real, you know, on the other side of the hill. And, you know, those buses get filled up quite a bit more than buses in Pacifica. But I do think that it's worth an experiment to, and I don't know why I'm trying to convince you of this, when I have to convince Sam Trans of this, it would be worth an experiment of a year or so to try an express bus to Coma, to the Coma Bart Station, as well as, you know, their express to San Francisco. One that just made, you know, stops at, you know, maybe Lindemar, Vallemar, a couple of stops along Highway 1 at Sharp Park and Manor, and then to Coma Bart, and see if after a year or so, it generated enough ridership to make it worthwhile. Now, part of the problem is also that Sam Trans is not very good at running on schedule. So, I don't take the bus very much, but the few times I've taken it, the bus not only wasn't on time, they just skipped an entire run. And that unfortunately is sort of par for the course, at least here in Pacifica. So, all of those things have to be sort of taken into consideration, and there's plenty of room for improvement on their end.
John, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think the one misnomer you said is that express buses to San Francisco, and I think actually, the job center, the problem with transportation in the Bay Area is everything is, everything is built at San Francisco's the job center. And the job centers are no longer San Francisco, San Mateo, South San Francisco.
Right.
So, I almost think express buses, not only to the Bart, but the Caltrain, and, you know, maybe over to Genentech area also.
Yeah.
That whole area, not just Genentech, but...
Yeah.
And Coma Bart Station's losing a lot of parking.
It is. And the parking that it's losing is the Sam Trans lot. So, yeah. So, yeah, you know, you're right, but San Francisco is the easy, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, for us.
Sue, do you agree?
I'm a little concerned about waiting for budget time without having a lot of public input and discussion among council about what we would like to see. Do drones give out emissions? Do you know?
Do what?
Drones give emissions?
I have no idea.
So, I would like, while we're being pretty comprehensive, drones are a coming thing. What was the other thing? Is there some way we could talk about low flights, airplane flights? Because we already have noise issues, and maybe they're also doing air issues, I would assume. And the Scoop thing, we're gonna really need to work with school districts, the two districts for sure, maybe the private schools and businesses of, our business area is very spread out in small businesses, rather than, maybe there's some way of connecting there. But would be very helpful and, I think, more robust if we could get the school districts, maybe they could give their students some kind of a credit if they came by carpooling. The Scoop itself gives, and Commute.org gives credits, but I'm thinking of getting people involved in this, because schools are part of the issue, big part of the issue.
Okay. Any other comments? Does staff have anything else to say?
No, thank you.
Oh, okay. Anything else from council? Staff over there? Oh, okay. So, I adjourn the meeting?
Thank you.
How about some favor? Yes?
Oh. Just for the public notice is that when we did the consent calendar, we did cancel the November 13 meeting, and so the next meeting of the City Council will be November 27.
They're trying to steer us in a different direction, and this year went so much better. So, I just wanted to...